Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everyone. It's good to have you here in person and anyone who's joining us online. This is the Provo Municipal Council, our council evening meeting on Tuesday, August 9th, 2022 at 5:35 PM. Meetings of the municipal council are being held in hybrid fashion, that is, members of the public can continue to view council meetings on YouTube or Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber. I remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded and broadcast for all to hear. I will state the names of our council who are online. Let's see, I actually don't see either of our esteemed council members yet, Mr. Fillmore and Mr. Hoban, but I believe they'll be joining us later online here in the council chambers. My name is George Handley, I'm vice chair. I'm joined by Catrice McKay, Rachel Whipple and David Shipley and Shannon Ellsworth, who's just stepped out for a moment. I neglected to invite someone to give an opening prayer. So I'm wondering if there's somebody from the audience who would like to volunteer to do that? Please, thank you, if you could state your name. Michael Bradley will offer the opening prayer. Thank you, you can come up to the microphone. Thank you so much, sir.
Our gracious, most beloved heavenly father, we thank thee this day for bringing us the opportunity to meet together to present our concerns and our issues. We ask you to please guide us with open heart and open mind to hear our concerns openly and make the right decisions for the best of our city and for our communities. And we do this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. All right, Council Whipple will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As indicated on the screen, required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for those who wish to speak. For items that do not appear, excuse me, that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, at the beginning of our meeting, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda. So anyone, persons who speak during this time to an agenda item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. Are we following the same format we did the other night with the computer or are we, okay? Those participating those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand feature to indicate they wish to comment. The chair may choose to alternate between in-person and online commenters. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. You will have two minutes to speak. And we would ask you to assist, to assist our city recorder with the minutes. We ask you to those commenting in person to print your name on a slip of paper provided at the back of the room and place it in a container near the podium. Online commenters should spell out their names before commenting. I should mention that we held one meeting for truth and taxation last week. And we will be holding our second hearing on that today. Yes, it is. Is it, is it not? Yes, the school district is also doing it tonight at seven o'clock. So if just to clarify, if you're here on behalf of the school district's proposed property tax increase, they're the one, that's the meeting you'll want to be attending. So is there anyone who'd like to make any public comment? On any item that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Kelly Potter. I'm a Provo resident, an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and a professor at a local university. I'll bet you can't guess which one. Additionally, I have been an advocate for the unsheltered in Provo for over a decade. On July 7th, Provo police officers were filmed brutally beating an unsheltered indigenous man that goes by the name of Mogli. The video was posted on Instagram and has had some traction, leading to a protest and significant media attention. Granted, this was not a case of the use of lethal force, but it seemingly involved the use of unnecessary force. Mogli was pinned down by one officer, clearly restrained, while the other officer continued to punch him in the abdomen. After the video was released, after the video was posted and a protest was scheduled, the Provo Police Department posted a copy of their policy regarding such cases. Policy 300 states, officers shall use only the amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. The reasonableness of force will be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene at the time of the incident. Any evaluation of reasonableness must allow for the fact that officers are often forced to make split-second decisions about the amount of force that reasonably appears necessary in a particular situation with limited information and in circumstances that are tense, uncertain and rapidly evolving. Given that no policy can realistically predict every possible situation an officer might encounter, officers are entrusted to use well-reasoned discretion in determining the appropriate use of force in each incident. It seems clear that this policy has been written for the police from the perspective of the police. But if 2020 showed us anything, we need to hold the police more accountable than we do in the United States. Instead of giving excuses for the use of violence, we need a policy that holds police accountable to the level of force that would be reasonable from the civilian perspective. Indeed, one contradiction highlighted by the protest in 2020.
Your two minutes has already passed, so hopefully you can wrap it up. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So we are calling for a civilian review board which would oversee the police and would involve members, it would be composed of members who are not involved in law enforcement in the state anywhere. And also members who are members of the marginalized parts of our community such as Latinos, Black and Indigenous people of color, LGBTQ folk, and also the unsheltered. And it would investigate any officer involved, critical incident, and would have the power to issue disciplinary action. To me, it seems like a matter of common sense that the police endowed with the responsibility to serve and protect this community also be accountable to this community. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important matter.
Thank you.
Sorry, excuse me. We, I can't remember if we still include this in the original materials, but applauding is not allowed in the, in the chambers because of the rules of decorum. So not, not, I understand that you're passionate about the subject and welcome that, but just to clarify the rules. Thanks.
I'm Pam Jones, Hedgemont neighborhood. I understand that what we used to be in these public comments was that if we spoke at the beginning of the meeting, we couldn't speak when the item comes up on the agenda. Is that still?
Well, if you're speaking on something that is on the agenda later, or are you just speaking about something that's not on the agenda?
I want to speak on something on the agenda.
Then I would wait until that item comes up.
I can't because I want to make the school board meeting.
Got it. Then go ahead.
Okay. I attended the meeting a couple of weeks ago with the neighborhood chairs and talking about the revamp of the neighborhood program. And several people in my neighborhood have expressed a view that we don't want to change to the chair's advice, chairs being appointed by some district board or whoever. We want to still have the individual neighborhood meetings and the residents vote on the chairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to talk about.
Please state your name. Thank you.
Stephen Lengel.
Thank you.
Something that I think was on the agenda last week. ADU or EDU or what's, let's see, like letting people rent down in the basement.
ADU, accessory dwelling unit.
I get emails from, I think it's Candace McKay and Shannon. And regularly, and it sounded to me like what they want to do is get inputs so they can make their decision better. I live half a block south of the cemetery. And there's four units back there, if you're familiar with them, have been in violation many times because it was single owner occupied and nobody could be there couldn't be any kitchens and stuff like that in the basement. And I would always violations. So my thought is, if you do come up with some kind of rule, mine can't be the only one like this. There must be exceptions where, let's leave it the way it is. Where no kitchens, no tenants downstairs. There's room in each one of the four units. There's a single car garage and one little space in front of that. So there's only two. That kind of well means if, if I've heard that there must be parking for this new rule. Well, most people have two cars. That means they still can't do it if you follow those rules. So my encouragement is just think about those things that maybe that should be totally excluded from whatever rules you're going to change.
Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Ty Belka. I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I've been a member of this community in or around the parts for about the last four years. And a few weeks ago, I was also disgusted when I saw the video of the police officers assaulting Mogli, a member of our community in the middle of our downtown. And I think what my friend Kelly mentioned about holding these officers accountable is vital, but I'd like to also speak about the other half of that situation. Mogli is just one member of about 100, of over 100 unsheltered folks around Utah County, last checked. I think it was about 150. And he's part of a group of people whose lives aren't only threatened by police violence, but also by hunger, sickness, and just the elements in general. Which are always unpredictable here in Happy Valley, all over Utah, really. We've had a very hot past few months or weeks, and we also have very freezing cold winters every year. These members of our community have had to deal with this their entire time with little to no support from their city government outside of a few vouchers here and there. I'd just like to ask, why is that? I think it's time we had a shelter for the unhoused to put in place for folks to be able to safely take refuge in while they figure out the next steps of their life is going to take. An article in the Salt Lake Tribune about last year said that several employees of the city, including one Dave Sewell, who was one of the city council for seven years at the time, said that such a proposal has simply never been brought up. So if that is truly the case, I would like to do so now. We need emergency shelters for those in our community who are struggling to find housing, those who are most in need. We need them at least seven years ago, but the next step is going to be right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to make a comment? I see we have one caller whose number ends in 1192. Go ahead. They push star.
Yes, hi, it's Melanie McCord.
Hi.
This is a question for, this is a question for Wayne because he's probably the only one, Wayne Packer, because he's probably the only one that's been here long enough to remember. There was a group that did a review of our police department several years ago after a scandal occurred in the department. And one of the things that I remember being recommended that was the creation of a citizen review board. Didn't that get done? And if not, why not? That's all.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there any other comment from the public? With regard to Melanie's question, the citizens board, is that, is that in reference to our contemporary, our current citizens board that's functioning? That was before my time, so I don't know if that's when that was created.
That's my understanding, yes. But it's not a.
It's not a review board, it's a.
Review board, it's a advisory board to the city about police, the police department and their policies and actions.
Okay. All right, we'll bring it back to the council then to begin our meeting. Before our first item of business, we'd like to take a moment to recognize a longtime council staff member, Karen Tapahy. Karen has worked in the council office for the last eight years as the community relations coordinator. She's done a tremendous job with the council communications, helping to increase transparency in council meetings by facilitating online broadcasts, Zoom participation, fostering relationships with members of the press, and working with the city's public information officer group to better serve Provo residents. She has also worked with the neighborhood program and our neighborhood chairs to help connect residents to city services and projects. And she has accepted a communications position at Orem City, lucky them. And we want to congratulate and wish her all the best in this new endeavor. We will certainly miss her great laughter and smiles and wonderful service on the council. And I'd like to invite her up to the front to present something for her and then invite the council and those on the dais to come up for a photo. I should also mention that with much less affection, this is our last night in this building. And we're not going to miss this building. Just, we will miss Karen though. All right, thank you for indulging us on that. We'll begin now with item number one on our action agenda, which is an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the appointment of individuals to various boards and commissions, and this will be presented by Mayor Kufusi.
Vice Chair Handley and members of the municipal council, I am recommending the following appointments to Provo City's boards and commissions as indicated below and submit them herewith for the council's advice and consent. First is our landmarks commission, Eric Carter. Eric is a licensed architect and has participated in the project approval process in several cities, including Provo. Because of his architectural background, Eric has knowledge and experience in historic preservation. I am recommending Eric be appointed to a four-year term on the landmarks commission, ending June 30th, 2026. The next committee is our TMAC or our Transportation and Mobility Advisory Committee. I am recommending Lisa Jensen. Lisa is currently a member of the planning commission and is currently serving as chair. I am recommending Lisa also be appointed as a member of the Transportation and Mobility Advisory Committee for the duration of her service on the planning commission. And the second one for TMAC is Joy McMurray. I am recommending Joy be reappointed to a three-year term on the Transportation and Mobility Advisory Committee, ending June 30th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and I apologize that I didn't recognize you were on the dais, nor did I mention Brian Jones and Karen Tapahy. I'm a little rusty. I just, you know, it's been a while since I've had to conduct a meeting. So thank you so much for that and for those good people. Is there any discussion about these names or proposals from the mayor? Okay, seeing, seeing, yes, no? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Councilor Ellsworth.
Yes.
I don't see Bill Fillmore or Travis yet. Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay, so Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
And I, George Hanley, will vote yes. So that is five in favor, two excused. Thank you. All right, we'll go to item number two, which is an implied motion on an ordinance adopting a budget for Provo City Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023 in the amount of $363,101,271. Kelsey Zarbuck, our budget officer, and Karen Tapahy, our counselor communications relations coordinator, will present this item.
Good evening. The purpose of this agenda item, as Counselor Hanley read, is for the council to adopt the final version of the fiscal year 2023 budget document. Just for some context, on June 7th, at that council meeting, the council made a motion to increase the general property tax revenue by 2.9%. This translated into an increase of $147,619.25 in property tax revenue. From there, that set in motion the truth and taxation process. There was a public hearing last week on August 2nd, and Karen Tapahy will probably dive into that a little bit more. But tonight, the council has the opportunity to approve the final budget with that increase included. The final budget document is uploaded to provo.org and is the exhibit A. That document on provo.org is the exhibit A of the ordinance tonight. Any questions for me before Karen gets up here? Okay.
Counselor McKay.
So this counts as our second truth and taxation hearing?
I believe so.
There's only one required. Technically, last week was the hearing that's required by state law. This is now just your final consideration of a vote on the budget, which involves voting on the truth and taxation. And so it's not technically a public hearing on truth and taxation, but obviously we take public comment on it.
Okay, I have to realize I did not, I mean, I have to admit, I did not realize that. And I doubt the public realized it by the, how number two is listed. So that's, it's good to know.
Right, and that, and that, and it was listed that way on purpose because the only thing that the public would have seen in the notice scene was that last week was the hearing. That was the hearing and the opportunity to make public comment on the truth and taxation.
But I thought we did, when we announced last week's meeting, it did, it did list two hearings and tonight was
It listed that the vote would be, that the, that the conclusion of the hearing would have continued to tonight for the vote to take.
And we did state publicly last week that we would be
Right, and we always take public comment on every item as well, so.
Anyway. Okay, any other questions for Kelsey? Just so the public is aware, we have discussed this budget for months. So this isn't a last-minute non-discussion item, but it has been deliberated for quite some time. Go ahead, Karen.
So I wish I had done this last week, but, and Brian reminded me that it's always great to give an example from, from one of the notices that we as Provo residents receive, because it's a lot less theoretical at that point. But basically, the property tax increase is 2.9% on the general operations portion of Provo City's portion of the property tax. So it, it's, I'll show you in a second, you know, where that fits in the, in the grand scheme. Provo City last had a property tax increase in 2015 and before that in 1991. This one will generate approximately $147,000. And as Kelsey indicated, this is going into the general fund to be able to be available for public safety purposes as yet to be determined. So this is how it breaks down. Provo City's portion, when it shows up on your tax assessment, we have three sections. One part goes to the library, another pays for our general obligation bonds, and then the part that's increasing is the general portion up there at the top. But then we, each of us as Provo residents is also paying 6% to Utah County. There's a few other percentages that go to state charter schools and I can't remember the other one, because I'm not looking at it. And then the Central Utah Water Conservancy, who is also holding their own truth and taxation on August 22nd. You can find that information on the Utah County Tax Assessors page. And then the school district is the vast majority. This is how it works in Utah, the school districts. This is where they receive a lot of their funding. So here is a sample bill. It should look really familiar to you. So for this home, you can see just in the valuation of the home, it jumped from $402,700 in value in 2021 to $529,000 for this year. That's quite a jump in one year. So that's part of the equation why we're all getting significantly higher bills. And then you'll see on the percentage changes, the Central Utah Water Conservancy District went up 24.22% on this bill, which isn't a whole lot of money, because it's a smaller charge. The Provo City portion, because they're putting all three of those categories I showed you together, it amounts overall to a 0.88% increase, in this case, $4.36 of, of an increase. And then for the school district, 28.9% of an increase. And so, yeah, oh, let me go back to that one. So that was a 31% increase on the, on the market value of this home in one year. And we're all saying ouch. And I have a few things at the end to show, and I already did this, got ahead of myself. So the, the basic explanation for the need to raise property taxes periodically is that the amount of money that the city gets stays the same, only the rate itself adjusts, so we get the same amount of money, except for growth. And you can see that the tax rate has bounced all over the place over the years. And this is how, how these tax rates are figured out by the county. You take the budget amount, which is the amount that the city is going to get from taxes, and I put ours in for 2020, over $4 million is what we were supposed to get. And then you divide it by the taxable value of all the property, which is $6.74 billion in taxable value in that case, and we came out with a certified tax rate of 0.0728%. Then you go, so then when you go to the next, oh, sorry, then you add your new growth, which gives you a whole new budget to aim for. So it put us up by 60, almost $67,000. So in 2021, we got to aim for a $4.9 million budget. And when you divide it by the $7.27 billion taxable value, our tax rate actually went down. So this, this is what happens. We, until we change the tax rate to get more income, we stay the same, even though people's properties are paying different amounts over time. So I got a really nice finance lesson out of, out of this process this year. But I know this has been hard on so many people, and, and I really enjoyed our truth and taxation hearing, because it's pretty rare when the city attorney helps someone read their tax assessment bill. It's also really amazing when you see council members themselves scrambling online and getting these, these great links. Utah County has resources online, and if you walk into their offices, there are tax relief options based on various categories. There's military ones, there's low income, there's ones for those who are senior citizens. I mean, there's, you have to look at all the details, but they have those. They also have some great information on how to read your notice, which, like I told you, this was, they did not do this for me in high school. So I'm kind of amazed going through this process and learning how to read that notice. And then if you're worried about the valuation of your property, that, that 31% increase for some people, and some people have said 40%, if you believe that's an error, then there is a process for appealing that. And, and I would urge anyone who feels that is an error to please do that. And they, and they give the steps online. And Counselor McKay last week mentioned that sometimes it's as easy as just giving some real estate comps, which are comparisons, to show what other similar properties are selling for, and they can see, oh, well, you know, we may have overestimated, because they use some different formulas for determining this, and they're not always right, and they know that. So anyway, that, that was just what I wanted to present today. So if anybody had any questions, and then the, the school board, like I said, there's the 71% of this, and, and, and I know their meeting starts, I believe, at 7:00 at Dixon Middle School. So, but I appreciate all the people who have come here to, to be part of this process.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll open this item up for any public comment. Anyone here in the chambers or online who'd like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there any discussion of this item? As I say, we've been discussing it for quite some time, but any, any discussion at this point? Counselor Whipple.
Yeah, I'd just like to, to thank Kelsey and Karen both for presenting on this for us. When Karen Tapahy was talking about how the rate was changing, but our, our numbers, our budget was staying about the same or going down, it's important to note that if our, our revenue from these taxes stays the same every year, we're actually able to buy less each year with that, right? Because we have the same amount of money, but the cost of everything is going up. We have to do the cost of living raises for our employees so that we can keep people working for us and everything else. So we've been doing everything we can. Our administration has been fantastic about stretching the budget. But with this many years without even inching it up a little bit, we're really far behind. So I just want to, to thank them for the presentation and, and thank our, our finance department for their good work on this.
Counselor Shipley.
I'll just make a quick comment. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into the budget, and we've been reviewing department by department, you know, different, different budget issues and challenges that they've had. As you all know, this last year has been especially challenging from an inflationary standpoint. Our employees needed some cost of living adjustment to stay competitive and be able to keep up with the cost of living. And so there were some significant investments made in our employees this last year, and I feel very comfortable with those. Having said that, the last few years that I've been on the council has, has been an extraordinary few years of, of increasing revenues from sales taxes as a city. And one of the things that I'm going to be hyper-focused on over the next year, and I guess just put myself and the council on notice, that I'll be very focused on is, instead of some of these necessary and important adjustments that have all been expansionary in nature, you know, to government and what government does in Provo, I'll be hyper-focused this next year on using any, any additional revenue that comes to the city and, and be laser-focused on trying to reduce our debt obligations and trying to position us as a city in a more sustainable path that way. And, and just be much more focused on our debt. It's not politically something exciting to, to talk about. We don't get awards for reducing debt or focusing on debt. Everybody likes the next project and the next expansion. But for me personally, that's going to be an important priority for this next year. And like I say, I think the expansion that we've had over the last few years has been necessary. There have been things that we needed to do from a public safety standpoint, commitments that we needed to make to employees. But going forward, I think we need to refocus some of that extra, you know, profitability that's coming, that's, that extra revenue that's coming on some of the debt obligations that we have as a city, and continue to add to our reserves, which we've done a great job, you know, in the last few years doing, adding to our rainy day funds and emergency reserves as well. So I commend the, the budget office, John, who's not here, and Kelsey, and, and everybody who works on it, they, they operate the finances of the city in a, in a wonderful way. They're very conservative in their estimates. They do a great job in reducing debt over time and adding to our reserves and in taking good care of our employees. I'm excited for this next year to get in the business of, of really trying to focus on, on debt specifically and reduce those obligations.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Okay, seeing no more comment, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
I, George Hanley will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor and two excused. All right, we will move on to item number three, which is an ordinance appropriating $3 million in federal monies in the general fund for the wastewater treatment plant and transferring the funds from the general fund to the wastewater fund. And this will be presented by Malia Daly. Sorry? Travis is now, Travis Hoben has now joined us online. Thank you. It's too late.
Okay, so basically, the title is telling you what this is, but last work meeting, we discussed in our ongoing process of appropriating ARPA funds from the federal government. So this is something we discussed last work meeting with Public Works and the administration about putting towards some of that money towards the completion of Provo's wastewater treatment plant. So this is just the resolution to go forward with that plan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Malia? I see Mr. Deckers here also. If there's any question, any questions that need to be answered about this item? Nope? Okay, we'll open this item up for any public comment. Nobody online. We'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
I, George Hanley will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I skipped Travis Hoben.
Yes.
And Counselor Fillmore is still excused, so that is six in favor. Did I skip somebody? Sorry, I got all convoluted there. Okay, Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, that is six in favor, one excused. Counselor Fillmore excused. Okay. We'll move to item number four, an implied motion on a resolution appropriating $1.1,500,000 in federal monies in the general fund for a fire station and transferring the funds from the general fund to the General Capital Improvement Plan Fund. This is also presented by Malia Daly.
Hi, again, same thing as before, so it's, the title is basically the item. So we talked about this in work meeting on July 26th. And so this is, again, appropriating some of the ARPA funds for a fire station, replacing the one that is attached to the current city center that we're in now.
Okay, again, this is an item we've discussed previously. Are there any questions regarding this item? We'll open it up for any public comment. Anyone here in the chambers wish to comment on this? And no one online, so we'll bring it back to council for any discussion. All right, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Chair Hoben. Travis Hoben.
Yes.
I will vote yes. George Hanley, Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
And Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Okay, that voting is six in favor with Counselor Fillmore excused. We'll turn to item number five, an ordinance enacting new mixed-use zones and amending certain zoning requirements to include these zones. Citywide application, Javin Weaver, city planner, will be our presenter.
Can you read in item number six as well?
Please? Yes. Item number six is an ordinance enacting sign requirements for the mixed use. Yes. Item number six is an ordinance enacting sign requirements for the mixed use and neighborhood mixed use zones, also citywide application.
Thank you. So we've discussed this in two previous council meetings and the previous last work session. I just want to bring you up to date from what's happened since then. Excuse me, I went to planning commission and we just proposed to amend the, amend to prohibit electronic signs within the proposed mixed use and proposed neighborhood mixed use zones. And the other thing is, since we've adopted the airport zones, the acronym for airport zone is A. And so this is rectifying saying agriculture is A1, just for clarity's sake. Are there any questions on any of the proposed language for the zones or any of the amended sections of code that I can answer?
Counselor Ellsworth?
Were these presented to the planning commission as one item?
Initially, it was all proposed as one item. And then the only thing that was brought back to them was the amendment for the electronic signs and the switching the acronym. That was solely because the noticing for that was done saying it one way rather than chapter fourteen dot thirty-eight.
Okay, I just saw a report of action that talked about signs, but it didn't necessarily talk about the mixed use.
They had already been talked about previously when it was first presented, presented to planning commission, all of the signage.
Okay, so there's not a report of action from the planning commission on the mixed use zone?
There was when initially went to planning commission, back in May.
Okay, maybe it doesn't make it into the packet or something? I just, I only saw a report of action on the, on the signed one. That's okay.
Is there some help you can offer? Okay.
Um, I, I was just hoping that, that we would find that in the packet, but it's not critical, I suppose, to see it tonight. Okay, gotcha. Okay, gotcha. And then I had some questions on the language in fourteen. I don't know if we want to go here first and then come back to fourteen.
Whatever you like.
Fourteen, fourteen D, one thirty design standards.
Yes.
Um, horizontal mixed use is not permitted. Is that like generally a policy within the code on mixed use that they're going for a vertical and not horizontal mixed use?
That was, I think it's a shift in how we've done it. Because I think generally horizontal mixed use is just going to be, you have a really large site, you could have a business is, or residential units spread throughout a large lot. And we didn't foresee that as being mixed use. We wanted it to be vertical in nature for these zones. And thinking contextually where these zones would be, I don't think vertical, I'm sorry, I don't think horizontal mixed use would fit contextually based on the lots.
Okay, there's, this came up with a conversation with a citizen and property owner down in the startup crossing area. And I'm not sure if it's owned for mixed use or not, but they were denied some kind of city permit because of the depth of their units, residential units were being optimized by the city so, so that in case someday they were to be converted to commercial, they would have enough depth there. But if our policy is not to have horizontal mixed use, then that's not translating to that structure. So maybe that's too specific of a question for tonight. But I was just curious if there's any.
I just know in, in the ITOD zone, which that area is generally always zoned for that, it requires a thirty percent, sorry, thirty feet depth to be habitable space on that first floor. If that's what you're talking about.
So we're talking about the ITOD zone, not the.
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. And then there's a, maybe it just a typo on section three at the very end. I think it's supposed to say garbage disposal. There's supposed to be an and in there, like bathroom and closet adequate for storage of items. And then on four, there must be an equal amount of studio and one bedroom units in apartments and condominium uses. So is that a one to one to one ratio?
One to one, meaning studio or one, or one bedrooms. But it could be classified as an apartment or condominium.
Okay, maybe we need like a comma or a semicolon or something. An English professor would recommend to clarify what the ratio is. If it's not three of them, it's just two of them.
Sure.
Otherwise, I really liked the language. Thanks.
I recognize Bill Fillmore who's joined us. Good to have you. Any other questions for Javin on this item before I open it up for public comment? And I'll say, we'll take comments on either item at this point, although we'll have to vote on these separately. And the second item is the first time we've heard it. So there is the option of considering it at, at our next council meeting if so desired. But let's see if there's any. Oh, did you want me?
I'm sorry. Can we just put that report of action back on the screen? I just thought first, yeah, I didn't get to see it because I was speaking. Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
All right, any comment from the public on item number five, which is the new mixed use zones and amending certain zoning requirements? Uh, nobody from the chamber, nobody online. Bring it back to council for any discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with myself, or Travis Hoben. I'm sorry, I'll begin with Chair Hoben.
Yes.
I, George Hanley will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
The voting is unanimous. So on the, item number six, which is the ordinance enacting sign requirements for the mixed use and neighborhood mixed use zones, does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? Okay, seeing no request, I will call for a vote unless there's any discussion of this item. I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with myself, George Hanley. I will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
I need a point of clarification.
Okay.
I missed any discussion on, on the substance of the sign ordinance, whether or not it's, we've responded to the concerns raised by citizens about downtown type signage finding their way into neighborhoods.
I'm not sure anyone heard that. Did you, was your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, I could barely hear it.
It's a pointed direction.
Okay, sorry, it was a little hard to hear you.
Shall I repeat that?
Maybe for the record, yes.
Okay. There was a concern at our last meeting, and then maybe I've just missed the discussion, that mixed use zone had some downtown type signage requirements or allowances that many in the neighborhoods were opposed to. And I'm just wondering if that's been addressed in this revised ordinance.
Counselor McKay?
We did have them go back and Javon did go back and take out all electric signs. And they put new wording in there to make sure it was only on the arterial roads. Is that how you put it? Or like the main?
That's where these zones primarily could be.
Yeah, you specified that.
So they're only backlit signs. And there's a time limit when these can be illuminated.
Yeah, that'd be turned off at eleven. So we got those three things added.
So they can be illuminated, but not the electrical?
Correct. This is, this, this specific act item is to ban electronic signs within these, within these proposed two zones.
Okay, so we don't have the rotating signs?
Correct.
The solid lights?
Stagnant.
Static, right. And they'd only be facing onto arterials. Okay, thank you.
So we were calling for a vote. Okay, that's a, the yes from Counselor Fillmore. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Chair Hoben?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous on item number six. So thank you, Javin. We will turn to item number seven, an ordinance, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the general plan, appendix C six, which pertains to celebration, specific development plan to substitute a revised and land use map, Lakewood North neighborhood. Aaron Ardmore, city planner, will present this item.
Okay, thank you. And could we also read in the next item?
Yes. Number eight is also an implied order, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the SDP, SDP five villages at celebration, specific development plan overlay zone and a related development agreement, Lakeview North neighborhood also. That's a mouthful.
I appreciate that. Thank you for, for, for reading those in together. They are very related. So if we can go through the slides here, kind of the purpose and the need for these updates, they kind of are, are dependent upon each other. The, the map here has, has already changed over time with the Lakeview Parkway here. Now this flows like this on the west side of this area. The high school now built, and there's additional school property in the middle of this, this concept. So this is what was approved in two thousand and eight. So there's, there's site conditions that have kind of forced some updates to this map. And then at the same time, the applicant has pushed forward a desire to update the zone language itself. So the SDP five villages of celebration zone is an existing zone, but the proposal here is to update it to, to amend kind of the stylistically how it's read, and to also adjust the villages that you can see on the screen here. So the each village would allow for a variety of different residential uses, with the most intensive of those being villages four and six. And you could see village seven there is the, the reimagined commercial area for Broadview Shores, as opposed to the prior map or the existing map had that up against Geneva where village five is on this map. So those are some of the, the major changes that were, were proposed in this. So there's a need for adjusting the, the new road infrastructure, the schools, the commercial viability of the village seven, which used to be over by Geneva, but is now placed on Lakeview Parkway because of the, the amount of traffic and the, the major arterial that it's planned to be. From a public perspective, this should bring, again, additional housing, variety of housing, kind of age and place type of development with, with open space networks to, to provide good pedestrian connections as well as vehicular connections through these, through these villages. Took this through the planning commission. We've been working with the applicant for maybe a year by now. Took this through the planning commission on a couple of study sessions, worked out kind of the map and the language that's in front of you today. And as part of that, you mentioned that there's development agreement. That's just a, an amendment to the existing development agreement to point to this updated map and code rather than the, the existing. But that's all I have for my presentation. Oh, wait. Counselor McKay asked earlier today in study session, the overall density for this whole development averages out to be about six units per acre. But that's all I have, unless you have more questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Do you know the total undeveloped acreage of the site?
That's a good question. Applicant's here, he could probably.
Sorry. Thanks.
I have a, oh, go ahead, Counselor Shipley.
Thank you. Just a question on the approximate location of open space. Since this is an updated map, why are we putting approximate locations of open space over private property and over like elementary school property? And I mean, why even draw it over some of those spots?
Well, um, so I can, I can address some of that. The applicant could also address to it. The, the corridor that goes over the elementary school site, for example, is a power corridor. So that kind of forces that area to be open. So what they've done with that power corridor where there's power lines to, to limit building is provided one of their major pedestrian open space corridors along that route.
So is, is that a blue line around village five? That's not a green line. That's an open space, right? Okay. Yeah, so I, my, my question is, I was a little confused by the report. So forgive me for not, not being confident I understood everything. Because I was not, this is, this is from before my time on the council, correct? When this was?
The original.
The original one? Two thousand and eight, yeah. I was gonna say, I mean, I'm, I've been on the council for a while, but not that long. I really like the diversity of housing types in this proposal. It's interesting because I've been wishing we saw more of these kinds of proposals on the west side. And this is the kind of thing I was interested in. So clarify for me, you know, I don't know if it was just an editorial thing. All of the different housing types were crossed out in the redacted version. And I didn't know if that meant that housing types were going to still be the same, but they were just placed somewhere else? Or were you actually, is the change that there's going to be less diversity of housing types? Or is it still? Okay.
It's a fair question though.
Just wanted to make sure I understood it.
If we can go to that page possibly in the text. So the idea before, what was wiped out in those red sections, you could see there in the, just right there in the table contents, one family mansion home, courtyard, urban, those, those sections, right? Those were very, very specific and very kind of one product type per village, right? So those same types of ideas, those same, same types of residential product types are now interspersed and mixed among the villages, if that makes sense. I don't think mansion homes is part of it anymore. Just changing market, it's not, not a real suitable thing.
Yeah.
From what I understand. But apartments, townhomes, multifamily, twin homes, single family homes, those are all still permitted uses through the new villages. And that's all been put in the kind of the, the bulk and intensity table that replaced these sections.
Okay. Well, I really like that. I don't, I mean, I don't know if it, is it something comparable to like the kind of diversity you can see at Daybreak where they're integrating different housing types in, into the planning?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the idea. That's what we even.
The other thing that was less clear to me and maybe less satisfying is where the open space went from the previous to the current. It looks like suddenly the open space just vanished from whole villages, at least in the map. So I don't know if that's a reflection. Because I liked, I liked the look and the feel of the previous version, which was more granular and more detailed. So that's why I don't know if I understood it correctly or not. Is there only open space on those areas that we just saw on that second map? Or are there pockets inside of the developments?
Exactly, yeah. The planning commission had some of those same concerns, same thoughts. So that, that earlier map from two thousand and eight, it's very, very specific, very like site plan detail map. So this newer map, while it still shows some of those major corridors, gives the opportunity as development grows through the villages for the, the applicant, the builder to provide specific open spaces through those phases. And I think this could probably be better adjusted by the applicant, but we're confident that there'll still be plenty of open space through that.
Yeah, I guess maybe the question is that what do we do, what, what are, how do we make sure that happens rather than it all just vanishes?
Sure. I understand that, that concern.
Yeah.
But I know Brad is here and he can.
Okay.
He can adjust that for you.
All right. I don't know if, Mr. Jones, is this the right time to ask applicant questions? We haven't had open comment yet, so I don't know.
You, you certainly can. It doesn't have to wait for open comment. What you may want to do is see if the applicant has a presentation that they want to make and ask those questions as part of their presentation. But it depends on the nature and whether you need those answers right now in order to proceed.
I think it would be helpful if you, you do have things you want to share. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Brad Mackey with Ivory Development. Just a little history, since a lot of you are new to the council. We've owned this property since around two thousand and ten. We bought this from the Gardner Group, Gardner Plum Group back in two thousand and ten. And we've been working on it slowly over the years, not nearly as rapid of sales as we'd like, and largely due to the sewer. And largely due to the sewer capacity issues. Over the last couple of years, we've been limited on the amount of lots we can bring on in the market because of our sewer capacity issues. So about two years ago, right in the middle of COVID, we actually started meeting with Mayor Kafusi and several of the management team at the city to discuss a plan to amend the, amend the plan to kind of make it more compatible with the changes, as Mr. Ardmore has mentioned, that have happened over the years. Probably the largest change that's happened over the years is the configuration of Lakeview Parkway. Originally, Lakeview Parkway was meant to tie in right at 2000 North and Geneva Road. And that configuration has changed. And we worked with the city several years ago to use corridor preservation funds to secure the location of Lakeview Parkway to where it is now shown on this map. The other things that's changed, Provo High School is the second major change that happened in the area. And then the elementary school site came right in the middle of the project. If you look back on the original plan, the, a lot of the, some of your questions you were asking was with regards to open space. I think this has a pointer on it. This, this corridor right here is exactly the same on both plans. This is currently a pond that the Bunnell family uses to irrigate their, their farm with right in this area. It's a manmade pond. And eventually this collector's street will actually go right through the middle of that pond. So that, that is a change from the original plan. I think on the original, you'll see that they have a pond shown in the open space. But that is actually owned, and I think it was brought up that why, why are we showing open space on other people's property? It was actually on the original plan that way. And we've actually shrunk that down a little bit just and, and made it a bubble format, which is following your new general plan layout for how you're doing your land use maps in the city. Just to kind of show loosely, this is where this trail corridor would go. And it would follow up here. And this is kind of a wet area along this, this location. So the idea is the trail would follow the power corridor up and then probably loop back in somewhere in here. The other area is we, we actually, with the purchase of the property, purchased this island right off Geneva Road and the little lane that goes with that. That's kind of a hazard right now. People, people drive up this street and come out here on this intersection or this intersection. And they're not coming into Geneva Road at right angles. And it's a very dangerous intersection. So we've been trying to work with UDOT and the city to install this intersection in this location that would bring traffic out perpendicular to Geneva Road and, and eliminate some of those hazardous areas. But all in the wild, this, this island, the idea is to keep that island and make it an entry feature into the community. The idea originally, when we presented the design guidelines to the planning commission was to have a cascading waterfall type of monument on one side of the entry. And then more of a landscaped island on the other side of the entry, similar to the one down in this location. And then study session was to place a clubhouse and swimming pool up in this location right at the entry of the community. And we had several different options that we worked with the citizens on. As soon as the sewer capacity issue came into play, we put that plan on hold because we didn't want to burden with the, burden the community with the HOA dues for a clubhouse and pool with not enough units paying into that. And the idea of this plan would be not showing specific locations like that right here so that we could adapt and flex and place those where they're most needed. And what I would like to do is actually bring that down right in the middle of the community and place that facility right in here closer to the existing single family residents that have been waiting for a while for that facility to be built. So we didn't want to get too great, too detailed on the open space in this plan, but have the flexibility to place it where it's needed the most and where it makes the most sense within the community. I guess my concern is how would we ensure that we get adequate open space by the time the whole thing is done? If, if each individual piece pushes it out, then eventually there's none. Well, and forgive me if I'm wrong, Aaron, on this, but I don't think there was a specific requirement in the SPD five zone for an amount of open space. The open space that you see is actually between buildings. And if you actually scale the buildings on the plan that was approved, they're not a realistic scale of building. So it artificially makes it look like there's more green on the plan that you adopted back in the day. Then what would actually be there if you actually were to build that building? And I don't think a specific open space requirement was specified in the original ordinance. So. If that makes sense. Counselor McKay, you have a question?
I was wondering if that pool and like clubhouse were something in the development plan? But I guess after that last comment, probably not.
I don't believe it's a requirement, but we've committed to the citizens of Broadview Shores community, the HOA, that we would build that facility. We've just been holding off so that, like I said, that we don't want their HOA dues to be so high that they can't.
That's, that's wise. I understand that.
Pool and clubhouse. Questions for, yes, go ahead. Counselor Whipple.
Yeah. So right now you've got the open space drawn as mostly continuous things so that you can have a trail. Would you be able to keep some sort of a trail access even as you're kind of squishing and, and morphing where the open space is?
So this trail corridor that's shown here is a power overhead power line corridor. So that will remain forever because it's, it's in a.
There's an easement on it and there has to be access for them.
It's a high voltage power line. So that will, will stay forever. Even the elementary school, they purchased property that contains that easement as well. And we've, we've worked with the school district on roads and, and coordinating different efforts all along the way on this. So I would think that they would, they would be fine with that as well, having that trail corridor pass through there. The other thing that we've worked with the Public Works Department on is the state a couple of years ago also passed a low impact development standard requirement that cities need to follow. And we've been working with the Public Works Department and engineering to create an landscape, open drainage system that parallels that trail system to satisfy that LID state requirement as well. And so that's in design with, along with this, this road that comes out here to Geneva to, to put that in place alongside the trail corridor.
So the, the two areas that are almost certainly going to continue to be open space are the kind of wetland area at the edge of it and the power corridor through the middle.
Yes.
But any other open space is a flexible.
Correct.
Concept.
Right. For instance, I'm showing this location on the map. That was not in the original plan. But we're under construction with a pickleball court and playground facility in that location right there. So that will be, it's plotted and done. So that's why it's shown on your map right now. Otherwise I probably wouldn't have shown that on this map.
Okay, great. Yeah. Cause with all of these villages, you need to have a couple of park-like facilities in them just so that you've got better quality of life for everyone there. And.
Yes.
It's good. Okay.
And when, when we look at facilities like in townhome projects or apartment facilities, we try to, to make the amenities match the number of units so that, so that they're not taxed on having this massive clubhouse that has such maintenance responsibilities that they can't afford to, to do it. So we'd like to match the amenities with the number of units in each, each different project.
If you built a private dog park for your village residents, that would be like the most popular thing ever.
I've built three of those now in different projects and I'm getting pretty good at them. I know what to put in the dog park and whatnot and what type of drinking fountain to put in at the entry that doesn't freeze. And there's a lot of thought that goes into a dog park, believe it or not. So, yeah. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor McKay.
Okay. A couple of questions. I want to clarify that the number of doors are still the same, 160.
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundred. Yes. I was like, wait a minute, that can't be right. Okay. Sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred. I received multiple emails from neighbors frustrated that they didn't get a hearing for this saying, you know, the changes, but that was their main concern. So I do, that makes me not worry about it as much that the, the number of doors are the same. You're going to be having the HOAs, a lot of common area, which is great. I do have a question. I know I've received a few emails about citizens concerned about owning the townhomes or single family homes. And then also being in the same HOA as an apartment and that, that high expense of landscaping or re-roofing or whatever. Do you separate those things? And I mean, are HOAs like with like kind of?
I'll, I'll address that. So we, we learned from several different projects over the years. And, and one of the things we've done with our communities and, and it's actually been adopted at daybreak as well is we, we set up the HOA with benefited assessment areas rather than sub-associations. In, in the past, when you would have a master plan project like this, each individual village would have a sub-association. But when you're trying to mix different uses within an area, that gets really burdensome on the, the people within that sub-association because they, they're paying the management fees and the, the, the. Can't think of the word right now. Auditor fees, all of the different accounting fees that are associated with each individual sub-association. So we've actually created a master association here with benefited assessment areas so that we can assess people according to their individual use, but they still fall under the master association. So we reduce the amount of fees that are paid to each different village. So for instance, if we, we have Village one and Village three, they might have different kinds of uses. You might have a townhome community that has their landscaping maintained versus a single family that does their own maintenance. We can assess those individually based upon their use according to our CCNRs.
Great. I love that. One of the benefits of an HOA, because I know a lot, some people don't like them. But especially where homeownership is becoming such an issue, a lot of HOAs now are requiring a certain percentage of homeownership, only a certain amount can be rented or whatever. Is there anything like that within your HOAs?
We don't have that in our HOAs. However, our contracts with our buyers restrict them to owning the unit for one year, which I think is the maximum that you can have by state law.
Okay, great. What was my other question? That was it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We may have more questions when we come back to council discussion in a moment. We'll open this up for any public comment at this time. Anyone in the chamber desire to speak to this item? I see. Yeah. Go ahead, sir. And then we have one online.
I have to state my name again.
Please. Thank you.
Stephen Lengel, Lengel. It probably had nothing to do with what was actually mentioned, but because it was talked about homeowners associations. Once they build it with homeowners associations, do they have to come back to the council if they just, all the tenants decide they don't want homeowners anymore? Or can they just do that amongst themselves?
We'll put a footnote on that question. And then when we have discussion in a moment, we can get an answer to it. Thank you. Any other comments? Becky Bogdan will step forward and then I'll turn to Melanie online. So Melanie, you're next after Becky.
Becky Bogdan, Provo, Utah. I have to say that of all the Facebook pages I do, the concerns that have come up, Broadview Shores and Ivory Homes have been really good to address those. And so I've got to say a public thank you to them. I said a thank you to them when I was in a meeting about the road. That road is an issue and they are working with the city to bring that in, right? And they're doing that for the residents. The residents have a huge issue with the potholes in that little kind of half moon section. And I've got to say, out of all, all of the building on the west side, the one thing that I hear the best comments about is this Ivory Homes Broadview Shores project. They've had the forethought to put in, from what I understand, French drains to help them accommodate any kind of water stuff that they've got. From what I understand, they're very, very well built. The comment that we got about the elementary school from one of the past things, that's something they're grateful that you put in this because they think it's kind of weird that the elementary school is not in there. But overall, I think, like I said, this is the best builder on the west side that I have heard compliments about. Thanks.
Thank you. Melanie. So let's see. There you go.
Okay. This is Melanie. Yeah. I have been watching this development since 2008 and before. And I remember how much input went into the original project when Dave Gardner brought it. Input from the neighbors. And so I'm confused about something during work session, your staff have stated that they had not had a neighborhood meeting, that they had reached out and that there was no response. That's concerning to me. Now he states that they met with the neighbors. Is he saying that they've only met with the, with the people who live in Broadview Shores now? Or have they met with the larger neighborhood? You have a lot of discussions about the neighborhood program. This right here is how you empower the neighborhood program. You turn this down until they've held a neighborhood program, a neighborhood, uh, neighborhood meeting about this. And, and you take the responsibility as a council to hold that neighborhood meeting. Catrice says she's gotten a lot of input from neighbors. I just think if you want the program to work, you need to work the program, you know? Turn this down until you've, you've held a, a good neighborhood meeting. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. This is the first hearing for this item. So if any council member desires to consider this item again at the next council meeting, now would be a good time to express that desire before we have prolonged conversation on it. Any thoughts or feelings about that? I'm curious whether the council feels comfortable moving forward on this item in light of the issue of neighborhood feedback not being, I mean, I don't know if that's, I don't know, Mr. Ardmore, if you want to speak to that, if there's something, there are more information we need to know about what efforts were made to try to contact the public.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that for what I can. So notice was sent out to the chair. The, the forty-five days has, has definitely passed from, from when these applications were made. And I think another interesting thing to note in relation to all this is at the two planning commission hearings, we didn't have any public come out. Those are notices as well. So that makes me feel like usually if, if people don't care or they approve of it, they stay home. If they are upset or want to share concerns, they, they come out. So I feel like there isn't much concern based on the things that have happened. That's my take on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Any other, Counselor McKay?
The emails I sent were the main, I addressed with Aaron and Brad all the issues that I received an email and the responses were all great. So I feel. all the issues that I received an email and the responses were all great. So I feel the concerns that they were worried about are not an issue from what I've looked through the contract and then the change in the the, the development agreement or the, whatever. But also I love it that we have Becky's input as far as how much the neighborhood has appreciated and felt heard and that he has, Brad and his team has reacted to their concerns, but the main concerns all had the answers that my, the people who emailed me want, would have wanted. So I feel comfortable with it.
Any other questions or discussion of this item? Mr. Shipley?
Yeah, I'll just make the comment that, um, I think the commercial node being on the other side makes complete sense. I think some of this is just logical development over time and, and things that have changed. Um, I think the primary concern that I heard from a few people was just this is their secret way of increasing density throughout this entire project. And I think that's why the question, you know, was brought up in work meeting and also, you know, in this meeting just to, just to emphasize that the doors didn't change in this project, the, the, the number of doors. I think that was a primary concern. Uh, and then, you know, just, just everybody's worried about more cars and parking and, and so obviously anything we can do to, to, to help mitigate what will become a parking issue. Um, we see just north of this, when you get to the Orem side, right, the new project that's just north of it, right on Geneva. Um, everybody's parking on Geneva now because they didn't, I guess, plan for, you know, the amount of people that were going to live in those, uh, those units. Luckily, it's on the Orem side, so I can, you know, let people know it's Orem's problem. But, but people are worried about that understandably on, you know, on this side. And so, uh, anything we can do to mitigate that and be very sensitive to, especially Geneva, uh, and the issues with Geneva anyway, you know, it's just not a safe place at this point, even with intersections, I still think we're going to have issues. So, so anything we can do to mitigate, obviously, the, the, the parking pressures onto Geneva would be great.
Council McKay?
Yeah, I got emails about the same thing, but you guys took away the parking reduction and I think that's great. The other concern was the HOA stuff, the density increasing, which it's not. And then the commercial being considerate of being near, I mean, they didn't want like strip clubs or party place like dance clubs or something, but none of that stuff was a permitted use. Yeah.
Of all the things, I forgot to mention the commercial, uh, which is one of the biggest reasons for the land use change. This actually, uh, gives the city a chance to try and drive commercial to the west side, which they are starving for. And, and we size this large enough that potentially it could even be a grocer or something like that, which I know is one of the big goals of the city is to have something like that on the west side. So hopefully we can generate enough traffic interest and get this road connected up through Orem so that we can attract some user to this commercial node. And sorry, I forgot to mention that. Thank you for bringing it up, Councilman Shipley.
Mr. Fillmore?
Just curious, I haven't, uh, maybe I've missed something, but I haven't heard any discussion about the long-term plans for Geneva Road. Uh, is that a UDOT road or is that, is it UDOT? Does anybody here know the long-term UDOT plan for improving Geneva Road and accommodating the additional traffic? Man, I, I heard comments about parking and so on, but I wonder if there isn't some longer term vision for improving that road?
Yes, there is longer term vision for improving the road. So there is a, uh, project funded in the next year or two on the Orem side, north of two thousand, north two thousand, south, um, that will widen that, uh, that section of Geneva Road. Uh, coming further south, we run into some really interesting challenges, including some historic buildings, uh, that sit right on the edge of the existing right of way, um, which, which creates a significant constraint and some big environmental issues. It is on MAG's, uh, uh, Surface Transportation Improvement Plan, uh, for improvement, which would trigger the ability of UDOT and MAG to, to fund improvements down to Center Street. And then once it hits Center Street, it stops being a state highway and then sixteen hundred, I think, is maybe it's, I can't remember the, the city street that continues on to the south beyond Center Street. But between Center Street and two thousand north, two thousand south, it is on the long range plan. When that gets funded and how we resolve some of these, uh, historic building challenges that were identified in the environmental study is, can yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you, Wayne.
I, uh, I have just a, a couple of questions, I guess. Um, uh, I mean, obviously there's, the development agreement doesn't, doesn't allow for increase of doors. So, uh, but, but I'm still, so I guess maybe that reassures me on the, on the one end that, you know, you're not going to, this isn't going to end up, um, getting entirely built out so that there's no open space. And I, you know, I can tell you're, you're, uh, very transparent and good at communicating and so on. And there, there's a good relationship here. I've just, I'm just a little nervous about ensuring. And I don't know what the, what the right ratio is actually about open space versus, uh, the development. But one of the things I really like about the diversity of housing types in the, in the development project as a whole, that I think we've really needed on the west side, is precisely because it allows that kind of openness, right? You can, you can cluster homes in a certain area and you can open up, uh, you know, near the pond or something else and it suddenly becomes a communal space and it really builds community in a wonderful way. So I sense that you share that vision. I'm just, I, you know, I'm just from a zoning perspective or a development agreement perspective, what, i- i- is there any way to, uh, shore up, uh, some sort of agreement on that, on the, on, on how that ends up looking so that we, we can have the confidence that we're, we're getting enough open space here? And I, I don't know, Mr. Ardmore, if that's a matter of, uh, the zone itself needing to clarify that or am I just, you know, way out of line here? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm just having this like, like open space anxiety. It's probably a thing. It's probably a diagnosable disease somewhere.
So there is a small section, um, in the, in the code, uh, titled open space, um, parks and open space. Um, and it is to be built by approved project phasing. Um, so as they bring in, um, so, so far they've only platted, you know, part of village to most of village one, right?
Yeah.
But as, as they work through the, the upcoming plaits, project plans, and those, those new areas, those will be developed and that will give us the opportunity to ensure these things. And they'll have to be built to those, those site plans and those plaits. On top of that, there's nothing else in the code as it is to, to guarantee specific nodes or specific open spaces. Um, but that's pretty consistent with most of the, the residential zoning out on the west side. Um, most of it doesn't propose or force, uh, subdivisions to have a certain amount of open space. That's just not something you see out there. That's more in our downtown zones that you see that.
I appreciate that. I, I, I mean, again, I just think there's some things, there, this is such a unique opportunity because of the, the willingness of the developer to, to provide different housing types in one development. So we don't end up with a cookie cutter thing. We don't end up with a bunch of homes with exactly the same sized lot and, and nobody's actually interacting with each other. And I love that. I just, I just want to make sure we take full advantage of the creativity that that allows us, the flexibility that that allows us. So I guess you're saying at this point, that flexibility or that, that creativity can be rewarded and/or incentivized at the stage where the, the, the specific proposals are coming through.
Yeah, your site plan review. Uh, but I think a great, we have a great example. We have a president, a precedent of, um, right there on the, the southeast corner of Village One along thirteen ninety north. There wasn't, you know, in the master plan, there wasn't a, a spot for open space in the pickleball court there. But as that area developed, as it was platted, they saw an opportunity and a need for, for open space for all those single family detached products around there. And I personally, I, I trust that it's going to continue. Um, they've, they've proven that they will provide a, a livable, a good environment for, um, the, the people that are trying to house.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Council Ellsworth?
Are we in the council deliberation or are we done with the?
We are.
Okay, the hearing. I just wanted to speak to the open space. I think that where it's six units to the acre, that there's plenty of room for open space on the interior of the site. But if that weren't the case, there's still plenty of open space here because they're immediately adjacent to the Delta Restoration Project. And so, I mean, there's so much open space baked in already. It's immovable. And, and so you can send your kids to play at the Delta, at the high school baseball fields, at the elementary school, at the other elementary school, or it's six units to the acre, so you still have a backyard. I mean, my lot's smaller than that and I have back and front yard. So it's, it doesn't seem like an issue to me.
That's helpful. Thanks. All right. Uh, any further deliberation about this item? So no request to continue it, so I will call for a vote on the implied motion. I will begin with, where did I last?
Start from the top.
I will start with Chair Hoben.
Is this seven or eight?
This is seven. Uh, do we need to do two separate votes on this one? Okay, so we'll do seven first. Chair Hoben, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I, George Hanley will vote yes. Council Ellsworth?
Yes.
Council Fillmore?
I think this is a great project. I'll give it a hearty yes.
Council Whipple?
Yes.
Council Shipley?
Yes.
Council McKay?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Uh, uh, so we'll turn to item number eight and I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. Uh, I'll begin with myself. Uh, George Hanley, I will vote yes. Council Ellsworth?
Yes.
Council Fillmore?
Yes.
Council Whipple?
Yes.
Council Shipley?
Yes.
Council McKay?
Yes.
Council, uh, Chair Hoben?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, for number eight, thank you very much. Okay, we have an implied motion on item number nine, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification from the residential conservation zone to the low-density zone residential, uh, low-density residential, LDR zone, to build a new one-family dwelling with an accessory apartment located at seven sixty-nine West Two Hundred North Dixon Neighborhood. This is also presented by Aaron Ardmore.
Hey, thank you. Uh, on this one, uh, we've got, uh, a small infill proposal in the Dixon neighborhood. So, uh, touring to you, uh, this is across the street from the existing Dixon Middle School, right here, from two hundred north. Uh, here's the property highlighted here. You could see, uh, the, the one-family dwelling, uh, with a possible accessory apartment that's been established and then the large rear yard. General plan for this area is residential. Uh, this neighborhood hasn't had a specific, specific area neighborhood plan. The current zoning is, is residential conservation and the proposed zone is LDR. Um, so jumping into the proposal itself, uh, what is being proposed with the LDR zone is using, uh, that large rear yard to place another single-family home. Um, in addition to that, providing, uh, opportunity for an accessory apartment. Uh, in doing so, the front home and the rear home, uh, could be secured as owner-occupied housing, uh, provide homes for, for families. And, uh, they've shown that they can meet the site standards of the other LDR zone and meet the parking not only for the two single-family homes, but for the accessory apartments as well. Uh, you've got four carports here and then tandem parking behind for, for eight off-street parking spaces on the site. Um, the site also still has space for, for open yards, uh, for the residences or for the people that live in those residences. There it is, I'll zoom in for you. Um, so Steph, Phil, um, encouraged by this proposal. Uh, this is not only providing additional housing in a central neighborhood, uh, but providing opportunities for guaranteed owner-occupied housing, which has always been a goal of, of Provo City as long as I've been here. Um, so, uh, we're in favor of this, this use of the LDR zone for this purpose. Um, but only for this purpose. And that's why a development agreement was, was proffered by the applicant because initially Steph had concerns that the LDR zone could be used here and the home could be demoed. You could put in some other product type in here up to twelve inches to the acre, right? Um, so the, the development agreement would secure this concept plan as the only allowable permitted use on the property, uh, with this, with the site plan. Um, so we're recommending approval on that, uh, subject to that condition of the, the development agreement being, um, approved inside. Uh, but that's all I have on this. If you have any questions, I have to try to adjust this.
Okay. Thank you. And I note the applicant is here. Uh, Mr. Shipley?
Yeah, just a quick question on development agreements. They, they are assigned to the property indefinitely? Or is there some legal, I mean, once that property ownership changes, is there any enforceable element to that development agreement anymore?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, yes and no. Uh, the typical development agreement terminates with issuance of certificates of occupancy, but they do survive transfers of ownership pending that. So if the current owner sells the property before building, the, the development agreement would be enforceable against future owners until their, until the building is accomplished. Once it's built and the certificates of occupancy are issued, then the, then the agreement generally ends. Um, we could, we could probably require something to be recorded. We, would we have to require it to be recorded on the plat?
Um, I've seen it been recorded on the title of the property before, on the, the parcel itself. Um, so that would run with the land, um, so long as the, the parcel doesn't get further subdivided or.
Yeah. We haven't, there are some potential issues with that, so we haven't tried in a long time. Generally, when it's come up, it's been about, um, when the question has come before, it's generally come up about things that weren't actually about how the structure would be built. Uh, it's about how the property is going to be operated. And so our, our, what we've done in the past is require the creation of an HOA and if the HOA require covenants that were, record covenants that require whatever the behavior is. Um, so, uh, if that's, if that's the desire, we'd probably have to, uh, look into that.
Well, you know, we've had this discussion before, you know, about development agreements. And the conclusion always seems to kind of peter out to a reluctant acquiescence to the fact that, uh, it's no longer enforceable after the original owner sells.
Well, it's, it's not after the owner sells, it's after the, the, the project is built.
Okay. And I've always thought, as a matter of real estate law, we are able to find a way to make, uh, to create a covenant that runs with the land so that restriction stays with it. That shouldn't be that difficult, should it, Aaron? I mean, really, I mean, the, you, 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 you enter into a covenant that, uh, this, although it's LDR, there's an agreement that it's restricted to, to this maximum occupancy and that's permanent.
I agree.
We'll have to look. I guess the, I mean, the question is who holds the restriction, right? Because if you, if it's only the owner that holds the restriction, they can always lift it later.
Because I, I think this is a, you know, this is a good project. I mean, it's, it's well-conceived. It'll be an improvement to the neighborhood. Uh, I think we just all have the concern that LDR potentially opens up something else down the road.
So the purpose of the development agreement is to make sure that what gets built is what the city council was shown. And that's what this would do. So once the two, once the additional house gets built, is it a fear that that might get torn down and something else built in its stead? Because I think economically that would be very difficult to do. But is that, is that the concern? Because the development agreement will guarantee that it'll be recorded and it can only be built according to that development agreement and according to this plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point of the question, not necessarily for this property, but if this is kind of the precedent that we're setting, that we make exceptions for LDR on properties so that somebody can do just one more, one more thing, conceivably there'd be acreage out there in the city somewhere where we do that, where they could tear down the existing, not the new one, you know, they wouldn't build a new one and then tear it down, but the existing one, maybe you tear that down and build, you know, a small apartment complex or something like that. This one doesn't have the acreage to be able to build something like that, I don't think. So I don't think we're at risk of that here. I just had a question because it, you know, it's going to come up with, if we keep looking at these types of exceptions.
And Bill, I'd just jump in and, you know, you and I have talked about this several times. And I guess I would say, if that's an ongoing concern, then I would say the best solution is always to amend the zoning rather than to rely on development agreements. So if there's, if there's an ongoing concern that that's going to happen often enough that it's a concern, then my opinion would be what we need to do is come up with a zone that allows that, that's in between.
From my comment on that, it seems, it's not just the teardown possibility. You know, one or 10 or 20 years from now, it's also fire, you know, if something burns down, somebody gets the insurance and says, well, now I'll put in a, you know, heavier density type structure. But it just doesn't seem to me to be that hard of a thing. If you did a development agreement, you could do a one-page recordable document saying this is a covenant that runs with the land. It seems easier to me than messing around with the zone.
So in other jurisdictions that I've worked for, we've solved this problem by putting a note on the plat or a restriction on the plat itself. Does that help, Brian? I like that idea. I like that solution. And I think what we could do in the short term is add a provision to the development agreement that requires that restriction to be recorded on the plat as a term of the development.
That'd be great. I'd recommend that with virtually every development agreement we do if we have similar concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Does the applicant wish to present anything to us? AKA Austin Taylor?
Thanks. I have slides if you guys would allow me to share them. Sure. Councilmember Fillmore, I want to address your concern really quick, just with some quick numbers. Once these two houses are built, the market value of the entire site would be about $900,000. And so if you were to buy this land and tear down the houses, you're paying about $90 per square foot for land. And if you use some typical developer numbers that they're using in the industry, to make that work, you need to be, I'm sorry, building 18 units of multifamily on the site and this zone only allows three. And so economically, I don't think anything besides this would work just because of the land value that it'll create afterwards. No. It's fine. Okay. So can I control it or say next? Okay. Okay. So thanks for hearing my presentation. I'm going to talk briefly about the project. So the purpose of this project is to provide a family-sized owner-occupied house near downtown with an affordable rental ADU and it preserve the Dixon Neighborhood character and create a model for infill development in the downtown area, which is full of these deep lots. This is the zoning that exists and this is the zoning that's proposed, just like Aaron was telling you. I'm in the RC zone, which has a number of different types of housing in it right now. And I'm proposing to zone into the LDR zone.
We have a quick question. Counselor McKay?
Hey, Austin, I saw your presentation earlier. I don't understand why it says you're doing eight units.
Oh, no, that's just what the zone would allow.
Got it. I thought you were saying existing was, what's it there now? I was confused. All right, gotcha.
And that's per acre. Eight units per acre is the density and I have a quarter acre. Thanks. So the Dixon Neighborhood is a great neighborhood of Provo. It's one of the oldest ones. It has a mix of housing types and building types. It's got residential, commercial, office, schools. And the densities range from single-family detached houses to three-story apartment buildings. It's a mixed-use, mixed-housing neighborhood within walking distance of all sorts of great amenities. This is the site, 769 West 200 North. It's a house that my wife and I bought in 2017. And the site plan, as Aaron said, would add a second house with an ADU in the backyard and in the middle provide enough parking required by Provo City code. The house in the back would be about 2,000 square feet, 1,500 of that going to the main house, which is a three-bed, two-bath house, and then 500 of that going to a modest one-bedroom apartment in the base, in the first floor. These are renderings of it. You can see in the front is the existing house and in the back is the proposed house with the parking in the middle. These are the elevations of it. And floor plans. And the design is modeled after, it's a mashup between the existing house and a Sears catalog house that you could buy from Sears Company. They'd ship it to you in a train. So that's what my architect uses. He mashed those two together. And I just want to highlight how much I love the existing house. When we bought it in 2017, it was in okay shape and we worked to fix it up. And that's how it looks in 2021. And so we want to make sure that this house stays. We don't want to tear it down. And we will be employing some sustainable building practices. My architect has built, he's designed passive houses before. There's one in the Tree Streets neighborhood. This is a very efficient building type that has good insulation, good windows and requires very little energy. So can't say that we'll certify passive house. Depends on the cost, but we're going to shoot towards efficient design. You've probably seen a bunch of other things we're going to use. Another thing I wanted to say, this is what Aaron said too, is that Provo City's ADU ordinance requires that if the ADUs rented out separately, you know, it's two units, that the owner lives in the house. And so by, instead of, you know, if I were to build a duplex here, it could be bought by an investor, it could be rented out separately, but because it's a house with an ADU, it would be a terrible investment property because the city would always be on your case and it wouldn't pencil. And it'd be a fantastic, affordable home to live in. I don't have these numbers on here, but if you listen carefully, I'll tell you about the type of person who could afford this house. So a house like this would sell for about $500,000. That's what I'm modeling in my pro forma. If the new buyer were to put 10% down at a 5% interest rate, 30-year term, they'd be paying about $2,500 a month and they could collect $1,000 a month in rent from the ADU. So their net mortgage cost is $1,500 a month. So that's, that's, a family making $54,000 a year could afford this house. That's 63% of Utah County's area meeting income. And that is about even with a starting Provo police officer pay, which I just looked it up, it's $56,000. So this is a house that a police officer with a family, you know, just one income could afford to live in. I just want to point out also, there's similar housing that exists in the Dixon Neighborhood. All of these are in the Dixon Neighborhood. They are big lots that have been subdivided and infilled. So that is my presentation. Happy to take questions.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Counselor Ellsworth?
I just have a question about your sketch-up model. Are you using permeable pavers?
Yes, that's legal in city code.
That's super cool.
Thanks to a former sustainability coordinator in the city, I think, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I want to try it out. I want to see if it works. We're going to be tearing up the driveway anyways for this huge project, so.
That's cool. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor, for Mr. Ardmore, before we open it to public comment?
I think this looks awesome. And I love it that you kept the historical and similar Spanish style of the buildings. I assume because you're using it as an ADU, that it will be open, the ADU, such that if a family wants to use the whole house themselves, they can. Like there's that connection, internal connection.
Yeah, the city code requires an internal connection. And my architect had to go through a couple revisions to make that. If you look at the floor plans, you know, if you care about the detail, you'll see that there's a locked door between the two units that you could unlock and keep open if you needed a bigger house.
Is that a comment you want to make? Okay, go ahead and ask it.
I have a question for our city attorney. Per state code on ADUs, is the city permitted to require an internal access between an ADU and the primary residence?
Do you want me to answer that in an open meeting? No, I mean, it's a gray area. It is arguably impermissible, but it is still in the code and was left in the code consciously by the council at the time the ADU ordinance was passed based on the argument that it should be enforced if it's permissible for it to be enforced or to spring into action if it becomes permissible in the future. It has been my office's opinion that it's not enforceable at the moment.
That was my understanding, is that it's in state code and it's not enforceable by Provo City because we are subdivision of the state and therefore must comply with their laws regardless of what's on our books.
Right.
Thanks.
You know, as I probably indicated before, there's a lengthy legal argument about what exactly the law says because of some references to prior existing laws and when they become effective. But it's been our position, at least so far, that it's not enforceable.
Thanks. All right. Oh, Travis, I'm so sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Travis.
Oh, no problem. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Austin, I think you've done a great job with this. Did we, if I missed a section or did we get any feedback from neighbors and/or neighborhood chair? Or, you know, was it talked about at a neighborhood meeting, anything like that?
Yeah, we had a neighborhood meeting and it was advertised on the neighborhood Facebook group. Just the chair and I were there. Nobody showed up to that. But I went to my next-door neighbor's house with site plans, gave them printed copies. And I also posted about it in my neighborhood Facebook group earlier this week and asked them to email you guys if they had questions, concerns, whatever.
And there was no negative feedback directly to you either?
Some of my neighbors aren't so happy about it and they might talk about it after me.
Okay, thank you, Austin.
All right, thank you. Maybe we'll turn it to public comment here. Is there anyone who'd like to address this item from the public? Please come forward, state your name.
Before I start, may I ask a question of the council?
Sure.
How much weight is given to my concern as a resident rather than a friend of the city council and the city planning commission? Because I went to the city planning meeting and I don't think I was taken quite seriously because everybody knows Austin. Everybody knew about his plan before he moved away from Provo. He doesn't live here anymore. He lives in Salt Lake.
Let me just answer that question quickly. You will not have any, there is no bias in favor of Austin because we know him. Just state that openly and publicly.
Because honestly, from your questions and opinions, I feel like your decision has already been made.
Well, yeah, please make your comment and then we can address your concerns. Thank you.
And could you please state your name for the record?
I will. I'm not good at speaking, so I've written this down. My name is Michael Bradley. I'm a Provo resident. I live right next to the proposed property site. I would like to take you back to 1999 as I returned to Provo after serving in the US military. My wife and I had put our college education on hold to raise our family and we were now ready to complete our schooling and settle down. As we looked for a place to make and build our home, we were fortunate to find one that really took root in our hearts in the Dixon Neighborhood. It was a small house, but very, not very impressive, but the property was what caught our attention. Beautiful open backyard spaces with lots of trees and plants and privacy. Over the next 15 years, we took our savings to make the house more to what our family's needs were and were able to feel very much at home playing in the backyard spaces, taking care of the trees while knowing our neighbors were doing the same, but still being somewhat secluded and private. Now, Mr. Taylor, who purchased the property just west of us a few years ago, did the same. He took care of the yard, raising chickens and bees, as well as planting gardens in his backyard space, while he updated his house for a better living situation. But then he moved to Salt Lake City area for schooling and now wants to sell his property so he can pursue other avenues of his life in other states. I would plead with the city council today not to make these changes to the zoning and to allow him to destroy this beautiful backyard area just to increase potential housing in Provo when Mr. Taylor himself is not even living in Provo at this time, nor will in the near future. Why take away the opportunity of the future owners of this property to enjoy their backyard space as we did and as I do my own? Is Provo in such dire need of housing? There are currently 107 houses listed for sale on Realtor.com located near the Dixon Middle School boundaries, as well as several apartments for rent. There is also new housing development under construction on the corner of 200 North on Independence Avenue, as well as many new housing communities under construction, as was just presented in item seven and eight near the new Provo High School on Lake Shore Drive. I understand that development and growth is important and unavoidable for the existence and growth of our city. It has already happened many times in Provo over the past years. Our Provo City library, restoring an old building from BYU to very good use. Our Provo City Center temple after the Tappanackle burned down. Our new city office center with the police department and mayor's office, which sadly we are not in yet. All great developments, making good use of available land and existing structures.
You're over your two minutes.
I have one paragraph left.
Great, thank you.
However, I would like to ask the city council today to help preserve the natural beauty and layout of our neighborhood, our neighborhood, and help retain some of the limited privacy of our backyard spaces, which would be diminished significantly with the construction of a multi-story structure in the now backyard area of Mr. Taylor's property, which he is planning on selling regardless of today's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Michelle Bridges and I live to the west of the Taylor's home. The property that I live on, my mother has lived on for 80 years. That property has been in our home, in our family for 80 years. We have watched the neighborhood grow. We have watched families come and go. And why should our family be penalized? Because the Taylors do not live there. They are absentee landlords. They have sublet their home for at least the last year, year and a half and the yard is not taken care of. The weeds are as tall as I am in the backyard. I mean, I just, and I do not believe that there is enough room to build a home. Our lots are only 50 feet wide. The city requirement is at least 10 feet on both sides or you have to have 25 feet on both sides. With our lot only being 50 feet, not feasible. We also live across the street from the Dixon Junior High School, which is a community center. There is no parking. Our home, we had to build a carport behind our house because we can't park on our street. At any time before 6:00 AM or after 9:00 PM, it is filled. And the students, the kids, the families, they drop off right in front of our home. We can't get out of our driveway between, oh, 15 minutes before school and 15 minutes after school starts, both in the morning and in the afternoon. Now, I'm sorry, I don't know how he's going to plan on building this home because there's no access unless you come in from the other property to the side of you. We aren't going to allow to have big equipment come into our yard. I mean, because now the city has to have access to our driveway in order to access the electrical work in the backyard. So we would plead with the city, let us maintain our households. Let us be what we have grown up with for 80 years. We are into the third generation of my family in that property. We've seen the neighbors come and go and pass. I mean, there's been, I'm past my time, but I'm pleading with you. Do not make this change because one of the questions I have is this zone development, this zone change, just for the Taylor's property or is it for the entire block? Consider that, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other comments from the public? It looks like we have one online. Go ahead, Melanie.
Melanie again. Dixon, huh? Dixon neighborhood. How deep is the lot? Hello? How deep is the lot? You're not going to tell me? Okay, you need to look at Springville's Pioneer Neighborhood Ordinance. They put together a really well-crafted ordinance of how to increase density on some of these deep, deep lots that are in the Pioneer Zones. But they have restrictions on height, on setbacks, on the kind of driveway, on the kind of design, on everything else. If you really are going to try and increase the density in some of these Pioneer neighborhoods that have the really deep lots, take a look at Springville's ordinance because it's really good. And other than that, Dixon, are you sure that this is where you want to do this? It looks like spot zoning. The council or the planning commission did approve a thing just like this in Provo's neighborhood. It's spot zoning. I don't know if you want to be doing this, but take a look at Springville's ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public on this item, please?
In the RC Zone, it seems like, didn't we open the door to detached accessories being built on the property? Or has that been finalized? So if you could build, let's say that the front house doesn't have an accessory. You want to add an accessory and you want to put it in the backyard and it's going to be detached. Somebody might complain in a similar way that they, you know, it's increasing density or losing privacy and, you know, the backyard's changing. So if, right now, anywhere in the RC Zone, anywhere in Dixon, you can, if you have a big enough lot and you want to add a detached accessory, well, when I first sat here before I heard the neighbors who are pretty vocal and concerned about changing the status quo, I just thought, well, you know, what's the difference between a detached accessory and what's being proposed here? And the difference is, this would be owner occupied. And so I know there's problems that could need to be worked out, but I'm looking at it more holistically. If this is good for this deep lot, is it just maybe best to figure out how to make it work for the whole zone, the whole RC Zone, so that this would be an option for anybody instead of just putting in a detached where they could put in a house that would be owner occupied with an accessory? And that way you get away from the, kind of the idea of spot zoning.
Thank you. Dave Connect. Any others? Okay, seeing no other further comment from the public, I want to just remind the council, it is 20 minutes to 8 o'clock and we have another item to deal with tonight. It would be lovely if we could finish before 9 o'clock, right? 8:30? So let's, let's try to keep that in mind. All right, so any discussion from the council of this item? Counselor Whipple?
So I watched the planning commission meeting on this one. I was at home on YouTube and that was, was really interesting and they went through a lot of questions on it. Looking at the properties on either side of this one, I think it's 755 West. Is that your house, sir? 759? Okay. Google's not so great. But I can see that it was originally one of these more modest houses that had additions built onto it, including a second floor addition and everything, which is, is a huge improvement for that property. You know, makes it bigger, more useful for the owners. But it also means that the neighboring backyards have a second floor that can overlook into them. The same kind of privacy concerns that were brought up by the idea of a second floor house being put in the back of the other lot. That's, that's not a property right that you have. If they were to build, you know, a 20-foot side scraper next to you and completely block all of your light, then there's a property right issue. But with this, there, there isn't. And I believe that we need to give property owners the right to develop and improve their properties. And where one property owner has chosen to develop their property and improve it to their needs, they should not then be able to deny their neighboring property owner the same right to develop and improve their property according to their needs. As somebody who lives in another one of these historic Pioneer neighborhoods, I'm very sensitive to preserving the historical character of the neighborhoods, the, the feel of it to have established families living there, but still have opportunities for our younger couples and, and these really vibrant students to come through and live in the area. So you have this dynamic mix of old timers who are established and caring for the area and this new blood and energy. And all of these young people end up staying and if they can, because they're there, they're the ones who snatch up houses when they do go for sale. And so this kind of infill development that respects the historic character, that promotes homeownership and that, that doesn't just like rip down houses and build a row of townhomes or something that's more characterless, I think is exactly the kind of project that we need to be encouraging. And I, I am saddened that the immediate neighbors are, are not excited about it. And I hope that as construction proceeds, that the construction crews and everyone will be as respectful as possible. But I think that this is a really good opportunity to, to have new neighbors and to welcome more people to your area.
Not at this time, thank you. Other council discussion of this item? Mr. Fillmore?
I still want to ask Aaron. The lady that spoke talked about 50-foot width and the requirement of 10-feet side yards and to help us on that.
So, yeah, part of that is, is correct in the LDR Zone, you'd have to have 10-foot side yards, which the concept, site plan has shown. I don't know where the 25-foot numbers were coming from.
But it does come within those dimensions.
Yes, we, we matched up the concept against the LDR Zone and it met code.
And was the planning commission vote unanimous?
I thought so.
Let me look, do we have?
I'm sure it was.
I think it was.
Yeah, there it is.
Thank you.
Okay, next question. Are there a lot of lots on this street that have the same potential to multiply second homes in the backyard?
Not only on this street, I would say the Pioneer Neighborhoods. They, there are a lot of remaining deep 200-foot lots with just a single family home in front. I'm not sure how it would work. Each one has individual issues, different widths and things like that, but there are a lot of deep lots in these neighborhoods.
Are there, I guess, last question for me. Are there potential improvements that could be done on both sides of the fences to enhance privacy for the neighbors? Whether we're talking fences or trees or whatever.
Vegetation, sure. Of course, there's opportunities there, yeah.
Would the developer be interested in pursuing those things?
So, do I still have control on this? If not, that's okay. There's one very large tree on the west side that's being preserved. And then if you look at a site plan, we've got, let me go back to, this one's probably good. Anywhere where we can put trees reasonably, we're going to put trees. When you've got a 10-foot setback or 10-foot side yard, that's pretty difficult to put a tree next to a house in a 10-foot area. When the tree grows, it'll probably grow into the house and it's not, not a good idea for the roofline. But at least in the back, we've got trees planned and then I'm preserving the large existing tree on the west side.
Okay, I mean, that, part of that setback includes the driveway, right? Access to parking for both homes.
Yeah, so if you have two houses with ADUs, the code requires eight parking spots. And so I've got eight parking spots there in tandem configuration.
I just wonder if there's any other creative measures that could be taken to, to augment the privacy factor? I'm just, I'm, I'm sensitive to the concerns of your neighbors and wondering if there's something else could be added that wouldn't be cost prohibitive. Do you have any ideas?
I mean, I could look at the elevations and I could, you know, reduce window area, but I don't know if it's, it's best for the design of the home. And that, that's one thing that comes to mind.
Did I, about the elevation, did I see that the second one was 30 feet?
So the, the zone allows, I think it's 35. A house like this would be about 25 at its peak.
Okay.
So you got like nine to 10-foot floor-to-ceiling heights.
And how high is your current home?
It's, it's probably about 20 at its peak.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Ellsworth, or were you done, Mr. Fillmore?
I'm still mulling, but I don't have another question.
All right.
I was just thinking about the privacy element and if the home next door has an addition with a second story, we probably didn't require them to add any additional privacy elements. And if we do, we should just implement that in the code citywide instead of trying to manage the site plan because the site plan and the architectural characteristics aren't. We've delegated that to the design review committee and to the planning commission. So it seems like we should focus more on the zone and whether we like the zone and whether we want to advance that and if the things we want to tweak about the zone, we should do it the next time around.
Well, rather than make a major change to the code, I'm just exploring ways to keep peace in the neighborhood. If they were reasonable and the developer was willing to make some accommodations, I don't think that's inappropriate to pursue.
Do you want to make a comment? Counselor McKay?
I watched the planning commission, like Counselor Whipple, and I do agree with Counselor Whipple's idea as far as the property rights and such. My heart does go out to Michael and his neighbor. I myself bought my house for my view and my privacy and I'm having a three-story house being built on one side and there'll be another house being built on their side. And it's unfortunate, but they have a right to do that. And so we will lose some privacy. We will lose some view. And that's unfortunate, but I can still keep my big backyard like I assume you're going to and, you know, not subdivide mine like I've had people unsolicited ask me to do. So we still have control of our own property to enjoy it and, you know, make what we can of it.
I, I'll just add a thought. I mean, I, I think it's a really intelligent way for us to add some housing in the city at very little expense in terms of infrastructure, to do it by means of modest infill in these kinds of neighborhoods where there's so much walkability and accessibility of resources. So I think it's probably something as one of the public, members from the public commented, Mr. Connect, that we probably would want to consider some broader scope solutions to, you know, facilitating this kind of a, a project in other areas of the city so that we're not just doing this by spot zoning. I don't, I don't, I agree that that's not ideal, but I think it's a reasonable proposal. Mr. Hoben, go ahead. And I'll just ask, while Mr. Hoben makes his comment, if any council member desires to consider this item again, after Mr. Hoben speaks would be a good time to tell us.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Hoben.
Yeah, so the lot, I think the lot makes sense. It's deep enough. From a parking standpoint, Austin, I, I saw the, I saw the picture. How many spaces will you have off-street?
So it's eight spaces. That's what's required by code. That's the minimum.
And, and essentially there will be three residences on, three residencies on the property, an ADU and then two other. Did I understand that correct?
So there's, in total, it would be two houses with attached ADUs? And so there could be up to four families living there.
Okay. I think that's probably my, my concern at this point is just that the parking there is pretty cramped. You know, the off-street parking is pretty, pretty packed overall. So I'm just a little concerned about parking. Anyways, I don't know if you want to touch on that at all, but that's probably the thing that's kind of weighing on me right now.
All right. Is there any desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? If not, then I will call for a vote on the implied motion. Yes. Okay.
I'm kind of sensing where the vote is going on this. I would say, Austin, this is a well-conceived project for the parcel you have there. And it's a nice design and good use of the property. You've indicated just a few minutes ago that you're not unwilling to consider some creative efforts to minimize the privacy issue. And if you would, I'm not trying to make, put you under contract, but if you'd make a good faith effort to discuss possibilities with your neighbors and just give it a good shot, that'd be appreciated.
All right, if there is no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the implied motion. I'll begin with Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Chair Hoben?
Ooh, I'll vote no.
No? Counselor, myself, George Hanley, I will vote yes. So that is six in favor with Chair Hoben opposed. All right, we're going to move on to item number 10. I'm going to keep everyone looking at the clock so that we don't drag this out longer than is necessary. What's that? Yeah, my brain stops functioning after 9:00 PM. We have an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding the neighborhood program. Karen Tapahy will present and then we'll open that up for public comment.
Okay, we've gone over this a few times, so I'm going to be quick and to the point on this one. So of the, the feedback we received from the public and, and from counselors in the last few discussions, I just wanted to update you. This was also emailed out. No changes were needed on some items. So the frequency of meetings isn't specifically defined. It says meet regularly. And so we didn't need to adjust that in the ordinance itself. It can be adjusted as needed as things go along. It does already include an option of reappointing someone when vacancies continue. So there wasn't a need to change anything there. And then the question about agendas, the agendas are managed by the neighborhood coordinator, which will be whoever replaces me, with input from the neighborhood district itself. And so, yeah, so they will be communicating with the neighborhood coordinator to, to determine what will be on the agenda. And then as we've seen in some previous items tonight, hopefully we get a handle on land use applications that we want to be heard by a neighborhood that will be automatically scheduled and the, and the neighborhood coordinator will be able to take care of that. And then updates we did make. updates we did make, so neighborhood input will be considered in the appointment process. That has been added in there. Executive board terms, we put at four years, but of course we don't want everything ending in four years to start out with, so they'll be staggered. Some, half of them will be two-year terms just to start out. Um, there will be two vice chairs. Um, that will, that will help support that role. And then we established, and when I say we, I mean the neighborhood program review committee, um, decided on a start date of January first, twenty twenty-three. That will allow enough time to fill the position that I'm vacating as well as, um, getting all this in order so that it starts on the absolute best footing. So that, that's what has changed. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over the ordinance and, and, uh, I'm here if you have any questions on that.
Counselor Shipley.
Thanks, Karen. Um, I know it's not required to have it be part of the bylaws or the code associated with this, but we talked about encouraging neighborhoods to continue to meet as neighborhoods, to have elections if they would like to, you know, appoint people if they would like, you know, to encourage that. And I just wonder if it makes it to, to the actual code at this point, or if there's something you would suggest that needs to be there.
Um, there is encouragement in there to, for people to continue to do those individual efforts and it, and it'll certainly be in the handbook. Um, nothing prevents that from happening. It is a free country. People can still gather and, and do those things. What, what is changing is just a, a structural setup that facilitates how these groups work with the city and the city council office in particular. But yeah, that, that has definitely been noted and, and I'm relying on the remaining people in my office to, uh, pass that word along because I think that really is a, a big part of it. I, I think some of the, some of the things that were, um, challenges coming along over the eight years that I've been here. Things like neighborhoods where you had groups that were kind of at odds with each, with each other, kind of on separate sides of an issue. Now they have an opportunity to each put someone forward and say, this is a person we think can help represent our concerns. And so rather than having to choose one person to, to do that, and, and unfortunately what, what generally has happened that I've seen is you'll see, the winner, the winning group gets their representative in as chair and then, and then there's, um, others put in as vice chair that might have an opposing opinion. And, and then they squabble and I feel like I'm a mom on the phone with teenagers saying, don't do that to your brother, you know, it's, it's a little difficult because you want them all to be working together. And so I think this gives a better opportunity for all the voices to come forward and, and it's, I think that's a lot easier to do if the neighborhoods can help us find the people who want to come forward and it doesn't become a contest of who, who's most popular, who can bring the most people. Just, you know, you have support, great. That's what we want to see.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think through the pragmatics of how this would work. I mean, I would, I would prefer maximum neighborhood input to the point where we'd say, you know, we'll consider, I mean, I don't mind somebody nominating themselves.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but, but we would also encourage and, and actually solicit nominations from the neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
And, um, are you, are we willing, I mean, what, did the committee discuss the possibility that we would only appoint among those who are uh, either self-nominated or nominated? I mean, when we say we're appointing, uh, what is that looking like? I mean, if I meet someone in the neighborhood and that neighborhood doesn't have anybody and I say, hey, have you ever thought about being involved in the neighborhood program? You need to submit a nomination, self-nomination in this case, or get a friend to nominate you and we can consider you. Is that what we're talking about?
We didn't get into like big details on the process. Um, and I don't know, uh, and, and Chair Hoben, I don't know if you had thoughts there, if you want to have one of the others on the committee address that, because I know, I mean, I know we need to flesh out the process more, but much like the boards and commissions that the mayor, um, is working with, she, she's selecting from those who put in an application of some sort. So you would say, please apply here just because we need a certain amount of information to work from.
Is there, is there any way to share the nominations with the neighborhood?
That's the plan.
So the neighborhood would be aware of who's being considered and they could, they could provide input to the council?
Right, if, if, and, and that was something the committee was supporting was, you know, let's put those names out there, not, you know, give vital statistics or anything that would violate privacy, but being able to say there's this person, this is why they want to serve the neighborhood, but then, um, and, and we haven't figured out how that will take place because we want to make sure that it's the right way, um, because we know not everybody's going to be able to do that online. So once that's figured out, um, being, and people being able to say, no, this person I know is an ex-murderer and, you know, shouldn't be representing our neighborhood. Well, I'm going for extremes because the, the one thing that I, I think that has concerned me during this process and, and I'll say it mostly because I'm on my way out. And that is that, um, there have been a lot of people questioning what the specific challenges were. I don't think it benefits the program, which I think is an amazing program. I don't think it benefits the program to talk about the things that are going wrong and focus on them or to identify who did what and what went wrong. I think what we do is we look forward and, and I have appreciated that the committee has supported that view. That we look forward to the future, not try to bash the past. Because I, I don't see any help in that. And this program continues to grow. I mean, fifty-plus years, this is huge. And it, and I have looked through all these historical news articles and it continues to change and update and try to meet the needs of a wonderfully changing community. So, um, the one thing I, I don't want to leave with is a laundry list of what went wrong. I, I think we have great things coming from this program and we can make it better. And that's why I've enjoyed working with this committee to put something forward that I think really is a gift to the future of Provo. It, for so many of us, and I include myself because I wasn't going to a lot of neighborhood meetings before I worked here. I just didn't find the time. But I appreciated having a neighborhood chair who emailed me. If there were videos back then, I would have watched those and I, I know I will now because I, I won't be attending these probably in person. They may not fit into my life, but I will have an opportunity to be involved in my own way. And, and that's what I've enjoyed seeing in this process and, and that kind of input I think has to start at the very beginning and who represents each of these neighborhoods to this executive board. And we'll provide for that. And that's why we, we do need to wait a few months to, to get the, the positions filled in our staff and to really flesh this out. We have a really good head start on the handbook, but there are also some, some related neighborhood or related ordinances we have to update. Um, if, if this program, if these changes to the program pass, then we've got to make some other updates. Sorry, I didn't mean to go so far off.
Okay, I'm just worried about the, the time, so. Uh, any other questions for, uh, Karen before we open it up to public comment? Yes.
Karen, first, just a, a huge thank you to you for having managed this unwieldy program for so long. And the thank you to you and your committee for this huge effort over the past year to try to address all the weaknesses we perceive in the current program. Um, I think, you know, I think we all agree as a council that there are deficiencies in the current program, they need to be addressed. And I, I look at the program and I see, I see maybe ten issues. And I'm, I'm, I feel really great about nine of the remedies. It's just one issue that just, uh, the more I think about it, it just doesn't feel right to me. And that's eliminating the neighborhood elections. Uh, and I, I just have to think there's got to be a way, particularly using email with, uh, uh, you know, the, the access we have now to all the households who tap into Provo Power that we should get the word out a lot better. Maybe we could routinize those meetings, supervise them in efficient ways to get bigger turnout. And our, one of our concerns is that we sometimes have meetings, as you know, that are poorly attended. And sometimes we have meetings where somebody who's got a hobby horse comes and lobbies for it, nobody else wants it, and then, you know, he represents his own hobby horse as opposed to what the, the neighborhood may care about. There's lots of issues there and we have, but we have some great neighborhood chairs who just, and several of them are here in the meeting tonight. We've just been very responsible and, and very helpful, both the neighborhood and the council. And then we have others who are totally MIA, right? Um, and so I, I would love to adopt nine of those ten things and, and do some kind of hybrid where we do have a neighborhood election option. Uh, where we, we, we set it up in a, a very efficient way. And we, uh, we have certain minimum criteria that have to be met to legitimize the neighborhood election. And if, if those criteria aren't met, then we reserve the right to appoint somebody uh, for that neighborhood. Uh, I'm just wondering if the committee gave that any kind of serious consideration or if we're if we're just so hell-bent, pardon the phrase, hell-bent on appointing everything, uh, that it really wasn't given much thought.
Counselor McKay.
Really want to address that?
Um, I love so many parts of what we're looking at with this. I think most of it is absolutely awesome. It is going to improve the experience and um, just improve the program. It's been a long time just with our technology, the different changes of technology and the ability for us to control the communication, use our resources is making a huge difference, but I just can't, I can't get past the, the nomination thing, the appointments. It like makes me feel sick to my stomach. Um, I think I, I would vote for this in a heartbeat with elections back in, but as far as appointments, um, I think they negatively impact more than all those benefits. And like, um, Counselor Fillmore said, nine of them are benefits, but the one is such a big down for me and such a negative aspect of it that I just can't stomach it. Um, I don't believe we can do a better job than the residents in our appointment or our voting for them.
Can I just, uh, encourage us to ask questions of Karen right now and then open up for public comment and then we can deliberate? Is that okay? I feel like we're.
My question to Karen was, was it seriously considered?
Um.
Hybrid election.
It wasn't a majority for elections.
Okay.
I mean, was, was the hybrid concept considered? We, we established a minimum criteria to legitimize an election and if they're not met, that we appoint. That's my question.
It, it was brought up, but as Counselor McKay mentioned,
No majority.
The majority, um, were sticking with the nomination process and, and I, and unless there are any other questions, I just wanted to mention one other thing that if, if you go with a different option, you may have to consider different kinds of staffing.
Yeah.
As, you know, and, and that could be something you could ask me about if, if you end up going a different direction, but any other questions at this moment?
Okay, well.
Staffing, I have a staffing question. Um, I do think that your position had too much work to do, so to speak. Um, I, I would love to do with our new program, especially launching a new program if that happens, um, to have a part-time person dedicated to that with the communications as its own position. What do you think about that as someone who did the job?
Um, what I experienced, it was interesting because I, the first few years I wondered how anyone could keep up with certain parts of it. And, um, the director who hired me mentioned that people hadn't been able to truly keep up with it the way the program was, was envisioned. Um, and so you just keep up with it the best you can. And so if you want to dive deep into a program like this, it deserves more staffing. But then you also have to evaluate your priorities on communication as well. I mean, this could be a really big conversation as to what you want someone to focus on. And we tried sharing within the staff um, to share responsibilities for getting out to various neighborhood meetings and we definitely didn't make them all. But you can see some of the deficiencies that happen when, um, there are requests for meetings and if someone can't track down the neighborhood chair to set that up, you know, trying to follow up or if they don't follow up, then the time, the time period passes and now it's moving on to the planning commission without a neighborhood meeting.
The proposed changes take care of that though.
Yeah, yeah, those proposed changes do. So, um, but yeah. If you think of thirty-four neighborhoods, if they're all actually functioning, that is a lot of work. So, yeah.
The districts takes care of that.
Well, thirty-four neighborhood elections is a lot. I'll put it that way. So, so staffing, you would definitely need to adjust in some way.
I think we could keep it in the districts and still have the neighborhoods doing it at the one event. All of them, boom, just knock it out.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Thanks.
Uh, Dave Connect. So Bill, um, I was going to send you a letter, but hey, you get so many letters anyway. Becky's always sending you stuff, right? Anyway, um, when it comes to the uh, minimum number, what's a legitimate number to say that, you know, we, we think that neighborhood chair represents anything? The Southeast area plan that was put forward or managed by the, uh, administration. They mailed out, uh, postcards to everybody in Southeast Provo and invited them to an open house in this very room. And we got like eighty, eighty-five people out of, who knows, twenty thousand. And that's, it came out to about like twenty-eight people per neighborhood that actually showed up for that monumental meeting. And, um, and of, of those that came, some were at, well, we were all asked, who wants to be on a committee? And then some were selected to be on the committee and because, you know, if you care to come to the meeting, then maybe you'll keep coming to other meetings. But, you know, twenty-eight. So the, the number for me would be, okay, maybe you got to have twenty-five. Or, you know, is that still legitimate? Twenty-eight was legitimate because we did the whole plan that way. So if you're just looking for a number, I can, I can go with some minimum number and if, and if the neighborhood can't get organized, then okay, maybe the council then appoints. Or if there's a neighborhood where someone goes AWOL after appointment, do something to either, um, add a co-chair. And you may have someone that's, they're not AWOL, they're just inexperienced. Uh, so if there's a vacancy for whatever reason, minimum requirement's not met, then appoint somebody and if there's, uh, an area that needs help, uh, appoint somebody, do a hybrid and still let the, the public, uh, vote in the five area meetings where you can manage them all. You know, five areas with eleven max, that's fifty-five. And thirty-four, it's all sixes. I'd stay with the program you have now and just do all the other nine changes.
Thank you.
I'm David Wright. Uh, positions and ideas should be the focus of civil debate. And the discussion for neighborhood chairs has been lacking. The reason that we were told we needed a code of conduct was because one of us might be a murderer. That seems over the top. We were accused of being divisive and bullies. Well, anybody who stands up, you can call a bully. Uh, because they're standing up for some kind of principle. Divisive, well, you all have arguments on both sides and we ought to listen to them. Our neighborhood chair program has functioned successfully for forty years since I've been in Provo. Our neighborhood chair program has functioned successfully for 40 years since I've been in Provo. And we've never had a problem with elections. We've had a problem with finding people who would actually accept the responsibility of neighborhood chair. There's never been a contested election, it's always been whoever is willing to do it. And there's never been, as far as I know, a real complaint about who the neighborhood chair is and who somebody else would want to take it over. In some cases, uh, where the arguments were for and against something, we let everybody say their piece and we decided, at the first neighborhood chair meeting, I went to, the neighborhood chair said, I think I've been in long enough, let's get somebody else in. I think the neighborhood chair could function, could function well. I think we could handle our own elections. Most people are just not interested until there's a significant issue and then they become interested. But I would ask you to keep the neighborhood chair program the way it is and work on it to fine tune it to make it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Evans, I'll go to, uh, caller 1192, I think that's Melanie.
Paul Evans. I've been following our sister neighborhood district program, Simi Valley. That's what this program is modeled after. And I've been following them for a year and a half. And for a year and a half, every neighborhood district meeting has been a presentation on safety or water or something else. And that has been the vast majority of what happens at a neighborhood district meeting in Simi Valley. Recently, a controversy erupted and so I had to dig into it and see. And it came to the neighborhood district and there were 50 people who showed up from the surrounding neighborhood. The vote was taken by the executive board for the neighborhood district in Simi Valley. A vote was taken from the attendees at the meeting and it was decided not to recommend it for continuation to the planning commission. And instead, the neighborhood district said to the developer, this needs to go back to your neighbors around your program. You need to have a meeting with them and work this out, then come back. That was a very orderly way. And I, I know that in neighborhood meetings, it is one of the first opportunities we have as a city to represent ourselves to developers and the people who would like to make changes. And so the idea of having a structure that is a little bit more formal makes a lot of sense to me. I think it's a way that we can put forward, maybe even move forward a little bit more from our more colloquial approach to one more of a, a more defined approach, but still maintain the neighborhood thing. The hybrid issue representation would mean that neighborhoods could elect their members of the executive board. And then when that board cannot be fully filled, the, the council can step in and fill in with other nominees. But I think there's a way of, of taking the best from all these programs and maintaining our neighborhood and kinda, you know, everybody knows each other, that sort of focus rather than having unknowns that are pulled out. Thanks.
Thank you. Melanie. You there, Melanie? There we go. Oops. We're not hearing it. Oh, there we go.
Okay. The pin of this program, lunchpin, is something that Gertice McKay said. And that is that the council needs to accept responsibility for the success of the neighborhood program. And that really is the pin about which everything else spins. When you have both a council that insists that neighborhood be empowered and you have staff members who agree to, to, um, abide by their commitments to the program, you're gonna have a much stronger program. So there are many opportunities that you're gonna have to, to empower the program. I hope you'll take it better than you did tonight when you opted to approve that celebration thing or to continue the celebration thing without requiring a neighborhood meeting. Uh, Bill said something that was interesting and that was, um, we will, the council, we will. You need to make a decision of who that is. Is that gonna be one council member, two council members, three, is it gonna be a majority, what's it going to be? Because you have had, um, circumstances in the past where a council member had issue with a certain neighborhood chair. And even went to the point of, of, uh, you know, submarineing her so that she couldn't do the work that she was supposed to do. The council needs to decide what is the process, what's the quorum going to be for the council to step in and, uh, influence, change, alter the, the choice that the neighborhood has made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other comments from the public here in the chambers? All right, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councillor McKay, did you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to comment to something that, um, Paul Evans said. Cause I don't want to, there to be a misunderstanding in what is written in our ordinance. So any development would come to the meeting with the executive council and the residents. Everyone would be notified about it and it would come and everyone would have a chance to discuss and vote on it. But they couldn't send something back and not let it go to the planning commission next. But, but what would be improved with this program is that notes would be taken, detailed notes and everyone's comments and votes would be seen by both the planning commission and the council. And, um, it would be much more organized that way as well as other residents could, could watch the Zoom meeting after the fact, see all about the development. And, um, that way they could send emails or stuff based on having watched that, even if they couldn't attend that evening. Another benefit is that, um, Development Services has agreed to always have a planner there to answer any questions. And I've been to a number of these neighborhood meetings where there isn't a planner and you're relying on, you know, like the developer to answer the questions, which is probably not, you know, the best. You'd just be better to have a planner there to be able to comment on parking or different details of the development.
Thank you. Other comments from the council, councillor Shipley?
I'll make a comment. Working on this committee over the last little bit, uh, we've, uh, I feel like we've wrestled with the idea of elections and with appointment and gone back and forth and had some heated debates about it and discussions. One of the things, and, and it's been on my mind a lot, obviously we've gotten a lot of good emails, very persuasive emails and, and comments from a lot of folks, um, about elections. My, my thought on this proposal is that we're, we're trying for the hybrid approach. We, we, at least I anticipated or expected that this is a hybrid approach. I think it gets city government out of neighborhoods and allows neighborhoods to operate organically like they should. And if they vote, uh, that would be wonderful. And if they nominate someone and have voted for someone and submit that, in all likelihood, that person will be on the executive board. If it's like other boards and commissions in the city, we're anxiously trying to recruit people to fill positions. We're not pushing anyone away, uh, or, or rarely pushing anyone away from, uh, positions that they want to volunteer and serve on. And, and I think to, uh, Dave Connect's point about, uh, 28 people, you know, from each neighborhood, I, I think, and of those 28, maybe one or two are as willing to, you know, go to regular meetings or, or do something regular on behalf of their, of their neighborhood. And so I guess I look at this idea of, of, is it either or? And I just say, I don't think so. I, I think it, a lot of neighborhoods in our city right now don't have chairs, don't have operating chairs. And we want to be able to go into those communities and try to recruit somebody and try to get somebody to, to serve on behalf of their neighborhood. I think for the folks who, and the parts of our city who this is working really well, and I think we've got some representation from those, uh, neighborhoods tonight. I don't think this makes a wholesale adjustment in what, and how you guys have operated. I think your neighborhoods will continue to appoint people who you know as neighbors will serve and serve you well. You'll nominate those folks and we'll accept them. We'll, we'll open arms, accept them and welcome them to, to this committee as well as trying to find additional, you know, people throughout the city that, that might represent, uh, communities of interest that have not been represented at all within the current program. And I mentioned that because I think we have, I think it's obvious that we're, we're missing a big group of folks on, uh, as far as representation within, within the chair program as well. And, and, uh, I just think it's the nature of showing up to a meeting and having your neighbors vote. Some folks are never going to thrive or rise to that occasion. But yet if you appointed them or had the opportunity to recruit them or had an opportunity for a neighbor to nominate them, you know, and say, look, this neighbor is so good-hearted, so willing to serve, we'd love to see them, you know, we'd love to see them serve within the city. I, I hope to be able to get people like that, that, that maybe couldn't show up to a meeting and didn't have the, the, you know, the, the confidence or the, the zest for, you know, for service to be able to go through an election process, especially with neighbors that they might feel like they're outnumbered by a, by a majority of, of, uh, you know, a predominant religion or a certain, you know, renter versus owner type situation. I mean, you can imagine there's all kinds of different divides, right? In these different neighborhoods where you might just not be accomplishing some of the diversity because they feel like, well, I don't represent the, you know, the majority of this neighborhood, but I'd love to serve, you know? And, and we need to hear those voices, I think, within the city as well. Um, and I'd love at least the opportunity to try this kind of idea of welcoming more into, uh, opportunities of service and leadership. And again, I don't see us within this new program or proposal pushing the folks who wanna be part of this and wanna be, you know, still serving within their, I don't feel like we're pushing any of those folks away. We're welcoming, we're welcoming them like we do with any board and commission, anybody who's willing to serve. And then adding to, and, and hopefully widening the net and hopefully adding, you know, more vitality and more diversity to, to a program that I think is, is great where it's functioning. So I, so that's my, that's my thought is, I mean, we've really, this isn't just a, yeah, we, we need to get rid of this or we need to do that. I mean, it, it's not just a flippant thought process that we've gone through. I think the committee's put a lot of thought to this. This has been on my mind day in and day out at work, at home, you know, whatever I'm doing, it's been on my mind. It's, it's been a top of mind issue for me for months. And, and I've really wrestled with this election process. And the more I think about it, the more I think we, we, we as a city should not be trying to authorize or legitimize an election that we can't make legitimate. Uh, we can't force it to be legitimate. It's a, it's, it's something that works well organically within neighborhoods because they're neighbors and they're neighborly and they, they do that. And, and we need to get out of the way of that. We need to get out of the way of that. Uh, I think the irony of this is I've got folks who are telling me in one part of an email to me that we're libertarian and the government needs to get out of our way and, and, and give us more autonomy and give us more democracy. And then in the same email later on, they're saying, we need more support, we need you to be more involved in this. We need you to be here in our neighborhoods to support us with this. And the answer's probably somewhere in between, right? But, but most neighborhoods around the country that operate really well are operating organically. They're not operating because the government comes in and says, hey, we need you guys to organize and we need you guys to form in this certain way. I mean, they're, they're, they're organically forming, they're creating their own leadership structure. And, and I see that in the areas that it already thrives and survives in the city of Provo. I think it'll continue to thrive and survive in the city of Provo. And then I think there are areas and neighborhoods where it's not surviving and thriving. And we're hoping through a program, and again, it's not, it's not gonna solve every issue, but we're hoping that we can go out and, and depend on some good-hearted, good-minded, service-oriented people in this city, which I think there are a lot of, uh, and, and, and say, please come help us, please be part of this. And I think, uh, I think we'll all be surprised if we do it right, what kind of response we can get from a good community like ours if we go out and try to find some of those people. Sorry, said way too much. I'm a little bit excited about this idea that we could involve more and have more vitality and more opportunity and more voices in our city. Again, I think there's a, there's a, a common response right now that we're trying to pick on this program. We, we wanna take what's good about this program and we just wanna make it, just expand it and try to make it a little bit better and bigger, uh, and more regular and more accessible. Uh, and, and anyway, that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councillor Ellsworth, did you, your mic is on, that means you wanna speak.
I did have some questions, I think, for the committee. Um, and I'm just wondering about why there's these, there's these sections about voting. It, it does, it seems like in the past, we haven't supported voting because so few people attend. And so when we get these votes and report to the planning commission and it says, everyone in the neighborhood voted for this and it was maybe four people at the meeting. I just don't understand the, the necessity of putting in this element about voting in this ordinance, in part because I think it creates a false expectation that that's what's going to happen and that that's some kind of referendum that's legitimate.
So there's two different parts to the voting, right? One is voting for leadership.
Yeah.
And, and I think we can agree that that's.
Recommendations is where I'm getting at.
So, so I think we should leave the opportunity, uh, and I'll just speak for myself. And I think this was the discussion that we had. I think we, we need to leave the opportunity for, uh, a, a, a group to straw poll anything, right? And, and I don't think, uh, there'll be any, um, you know, could this be misunderstood as something that's official? Potentially, but I guess the idea is just allow them to still straw poll like they have. And, but have it recorded and have comments recorded. And I think that's maybe what we've been missing from how it's been represented in the past.
I think it feels less like a straw poll when you're recording people's, um, address and like verifying their, their residency in that area. So it doesn't look like a straw poll at all, it looks like a very formal vote.
Well, wouldn't you rather know where they're from? So you know that it's like the people from there?
I, I guess I just don't assume mal-intent and I assume that people will not try to infiltrate this. And like, I don't know who has the time for that, I guess. But I, I just don't see the necessity of having such a formal vote. And I don't, if you're having really formal votes, then that's when people try to infiltrate it. But I would hate for a developer to say, oh, these nine people voted against my project, so I never wanna work in Provo and I don't wanna bring my good project forward and this was a terrible experience. Because that, we're endorsing these kinds of votes.
Well, I guess I only, I thought of it as no different than, you know, soliciting comments on open city hall or, or right here in the council, uh, their straw polls, they're, they're sort of, but, but I think it's helpful to know that they're in the neighborhood. I, I wanna know that because in, I do think actually, you know, there have been cases where people will throw a bunch of people into a meeting to try to, to try to tip the scales one way or the other. And they may not be, uh, people who are, you know, living there locally. So I, I don't know, I, I didn't see it as a, as, as any sort of binding thing. I do think the perception of it potentially being binding is, is problematic, but maybe that's something we just have to keep, uh, explaining to people that this is, you know, no different than, than assessing. I, I just think we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna move in this direction, I, I think we should still make sure we do everything we can to make sure local input on local projects is solicited and obtained in a responsible way. We can do whatever we normally do with that information, right? For whether we like it or not, or whether we agree or not. But I think we still wanna make sure that we don't feel like we're bypassing it.
I think what we're doing is we're asking people for a yes or no vote. And, and in open city hall, we rarely ask people, do you hate this project or do you love this product? We ask them, what feedback do you have on this project? And so if, if that's what it was, if it was you verifying my address and me saying, I like this project for these reasons or I dislike this project for these reasons, that's a, that's to me, a very different thing than me raising my hand in opposition or in favor of something and that being a categorical report.
We've been doing these straw polls for a long time and I don't think anyone's under the illusion that they're binding in any way. Um, I know I want as much input as possible. And the benefit of this program would be, it would be all recorded and it would say, you know, if there are two people there and two people, you know, if everyone was for it, they're gonna see that two people said yes out of the two. So the numbers are gonna be there, total who was there, who voted yes, who voted no. And it's for the council and the planning commission to do with what as, you know, as they wish.
And, and maybe I'll just add to that, that I think the, the functionality of a straw poll is just if you have a big group and it's not logistically possible to hear everybody's opinion, but you wanna get a sense. You know, I think, I think that's, that's a helpful, that's a helpful tool. Uh, I agree with you though, that people substantive comments about why they agree or disagree or what they feel about, or obviously, you know, that'll be important to have and it'll be great to have that documented.
I think it's just gonna be hard to manage people's expectations. I think it's just going to be hard to manage people's expectations.
Okay, we're coming up on an hour of this discussion, so just want to keep everyone's mind on that.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right.
Well, I'm still going to make my comment, even though you reminded me what time it is.
Especially for those who haven't made comments yet.
So on, on this, I live in the Mazer neighborhood and we've had different groups organize for things outside of the neighborhood program. So there's been a Mazer group that's very concerned about the safety of one of the industrial properties in the, the neighborhood. And they organized, they did their own lawsuit, they tried to coordinate with the city. And one of the organizers in that group wanted to, to use the neighborhood program at it. And he had a very different sense of what the neighborhood program was and what kind of authority it had. And, because he was from a different city and he was really disappointed that the neighborhood chair couldn't like go and demand that the city do something on his behalf. And so the response was they formed their own group and were super active and met with the fire department and everything. And it's one way that you can see that neighbors who are concerned about something can still organize and engage and create their own little coalition and have a voice. Another thing that we have in our neighborhood is for 20 years, we've had a giant block party for the third of July, usually whatever the day is before the, the parade. And it's a huge thing with, I don't know, dozens of people organizing it. And then we have hundreds and hundreds of people come to this party. It is a big party. And this is something that's organized by the neighborhood for the neighborhood has been going on. So the change in the neighborhood program does not stop neighborhood organizing, either for safety, for building, or for doing really cool, awesome parties where you have the fire department set up a swimming pool in the middle of the street. Right? So that's, that's one thing. The second thing I wanted to say is that this proposal is a radical change for the role of the neighborhood representatives. And I don't want to downplay that because in the existing program, there is a huge burden on the neighborhood chair to organize these meetings, to write up your own notes and summaries, send it to everybody, get the information from the developer and city and pass it out to your residents, to get the feedback from your residents and convey it to the city and try to do so in a matter that is fair, impartial, that represents everything that you've heard. That is a huge burden that we've put on people with relatively little training and, and support. And as I understand it, this program, instead of having a chair who carries that full burden on their own, sometimes with the assistance of vice chairs and sometimes not, sometimes they're the only one typing these emails. We are making, instead of being the chair, that neighborhood representative is a board member on this little like geographic regional committee with other neighborhood representatives. And the burden of doing those minutes and meeting notification and everything is on city staff. And you have built into that your support network of other neighborhood representatives there. And you're still the point person for your particular geographic area, but you aren't carrying that whole burden on your own anymore. And I think it's worth trying this to see if it, if it is helpful. Just because I know how hard it is to, to carry this burden. And I know we've got really great chairs in the room who've done that willingly, but it's a lot of time that they've done with, with little support. And I see this as a good way to give them that support.
Mr. Fillmore. Go ahead.
I, I'd say at the outset that I have great respect for, for David. I don't think I've ever heard you speak with such passion about something. Maybe that's a function of how long you've been at this, trying to, on this committee, trying to pull something together and find appropriate compromises. My problem is, I mean, we all, we all agree that the key problem we're trying to address is that the neighborhood involvement, engagement, representation, or however you want to call it, has been spotty. And we feel like there are a lot of neighborhoods that are underrepresented. So I find myself struggling with two opposing optics. One optic is the one you see tonight. The, the, the best of our neighborhood chairs are here, but 30 other neighborhoods aren't represented in this discussion at all. And I think that's, you know, illustrates the problem we're trying to address. If, if every one of our neighborhood chairs could be a Rachel Whipple, we'd, we'd be in great shape. But, or, or David or Becky, I mean, just, uh, but that's the problem. The other competing optic, however, is that the, the, I mean, the, golly, I would say the overwhelming super majority of the emails we've gotten, the comments, oral and written, whatever, have been very, I mean, to the point of vehement that we're taking something away from the neighborhoods. Maybe they misconstrued the neighborhood program the way it was originally conceived. But the, the sense that what we're doing is undemocratic. It's autocratic on our part. And that we're depriving them of their voice in the neighborhoods. I, I just, I think, I, I don't see an urgency that we have to approve as is tonight. I think we could take some more time. I'd like to explore what I call the hybrid option to see if we can't find a consensus on a way to do it and give it a year or two and see how it works. If it doesn't work, then we say, we told you so, you know, we're going to full appointment approach. But I think otherwise it's an unforced error, at least on a PR level. And I, I just would hope that we should give it some more time and thought and maybe come up with a viable hybrid to give neighborhoods a chance to elect representatives and with minimum criteria to legitimize that election. I, I think that's possible. I don't want to give up on it that easily. So I, you know, I, I would have to vote no on the proposal before us tonight.
Okay, any other comments? I don't know if you wanted to add anything from what you were saying earlier. I'm not putting you on the spot. I just didn't, I felt badly that I was, okay.
Well, I would second Counsel Philmore's suggestion if we're open to looking at a hybrid option. I, I'm definitely going to vote no as it stands, although I think the other nine things are awesome.
All right, I, I guess I'll make a quick comment. I, I, in the interest of time, will be brief because I actually feel like Counselor Shipley summarized a lot of how I feel about this. So I can just give in a sense a hearty amen to what he said. I just have always, I always struggled with this issue of whether the program was intended to represent neighbors or was it intended to engage neighbors? And I think to the degree that people have come to the conclusion that the neighborhood program is established to represent neighbors, that's a misleading notion because we don't do proper elections to represent neighbors. And unless we make it more formal and do it across the city, and if we were a much larger city, I would actually opt for that in a heartbeat. But at this, at this, in this city, at this level, I think we invite trouble when we grant a larger voice in the democratic process to one person on the basis of an informal and sometimes haphazard process that I don't think gives confidence in the city that, that voices are adequately represented to the council. So on the, in the interest of democracy, I actually think it's better for us to reconceive the program in the way that it's being proposed so that it's not about representation. Because that process is already in place in which individual citizens and groups of citizens can appeal to the council directly on any issue that concerns them. And then we can use the program to engage neighborhoods and engaging them helps them to get the information they need and helps them to voice informed opinions to the council on a variety of issues that, that. But it pains me that this is interpreted in any way as an insult or a lack of gratitude for the service that, that so many excellent neighborhood chairs, including those who are here, have rendered. And I think it's the intention that we would immediately appoint all current or something close to it, right? To get this program started, we would, we would just invite everyone to be a part of these governing boards right away. So we would, and continue to enjoy the voices of those who have been engaged. But again, in such a way that we take the burden off of them. I know some, some neighborhood chairs have felt crushed by that burden of the expectation that they should speak on behalf of a neighborhood when that wasn't what they wanted to do. They wanted to be able to engage the neighborhood, but not necessarily speak for them. So I do think that's, that's a problem with, with the status quo. If there's no further comment, Counsel Whipple.
So because my understanding is that we would initially fill these boards with the current neighborhood chairs, it would, all of those initial people on these advisory boards or these district boards, whatever we're calling them, would have been elected through the existing neighborhood process. And then we have, Karen, do you know how many neighborhoods do not have somebody that we would need to then appoint someone or?
We have acting chairs in place in, in a good number right now. And part of that was holding off during the pandemic and, and then as we put this together. So it would depend on if they're willing to continue to step forward. Those acting chairs have generally been vice chairs that were voted in by the neighborhood. And then as the chair moves on, they fill in, something you're familiar with.
Oh, yeah. So the idea is that we would offer a board position to the people who are chairs and acting chairs now, which they could decline if they chose to. And if they declined, then would we next ask vice chairs or other people who are already in that program?
We haven't discussed that. We mostly had paid attention to chairs being the ones to come in. I guess in, in the spirit of asking the neighborhoods for their input, it's, it's worth having those neighborhoods decide who to put forward and having 11 on each board is more than the number of neighborhoods. So you're still going to want to fill a few positions.
What I'm thinking is it might be good to adopt this program as we've, we've got it outlined. And then try to see how it functions with the notices and the meetings. Because we would have a period of time before we would need to fill many seats. Either before there would need to be an appointment or an election. And we would be able to see if the, the recording, the noticing, the agendas, everything works well enough that it looks like we could have a viable election for those neighborhood representatives instead of an appointment process. Because that was, was one of the comments that we got is, you know, right now it's so hard to get anyone together with notice or to, to have this meeting to get a good representative election. But if we put this structure in place, then it may be possible to actually have enough notice and turnout that you could have people do it. But I would want to see that that structure is working in order to do that, because otherwise we have the same election problems that we do now. We haven't solved it.
Are you proposing a kind of reverse the model to what Mr. Fillmore was, was saying, that we try this new model?
Yeah. And then we look at it and, and see if we think that we could actually have viable elections. And if we can fill the, the first slate of, of seats with the already elected chairs and vice chairs, then we've, we've got that semblance of democracy that we've heard we really, really want from our people. And then we can see if we've got a good enough structure that we can actually add some substance to it.
I, I've just, a quick response is I've, I've assumed all along that, you know, we're six months into this, a year into it, we're going to find out what's working well, what's not working well, and we're going to make tweaks. There's nothing that says we can't.
Yeah. And if we see that we have good engagement after six months, that's well before any of these two year or four year periods would be up. We would have time to be able to say, yeah, I think this is robust enough that we could do elections, but in the meantime, if somebody moves to a different city, then we could still fill that position.
Seven minutes.
I have a question on that. How are we going to verify that those are elections, that those are proper elections? I mean, we can't verify.
No, they're not proper elections. It's not real democracy, but it's what makes us feel good. Because we got to say, I as a neighborhood care about this person representing me. And I, the person picked by the neighborhood, know that at least five people care.
But why don't people run for office?
Because it's awful.
But like, but I mean, being a neighborhood chair isn't necessarily a really terrific experience all the time either. So.
Counselor McKay has a, has a comment.
I mean, when Counselor Fillmore
Seriously, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this meeting in seven minutes.
Counselor Fillmore.
Vote or not. So I would like to vote in seven minutes. Go ahead.
Um, I don't, I don't, Shannon mentions how is that a proper vote? How was appointing any kind of vote? I mean, there's not, you're, there's, there's nothing democratic or justified or any more reasonable or anything than a, than a, an appointing. So I don't see how there's ones better than, I don't see how pointing is any way better or more fair or more democratic than what Rachel is suggesting.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a clarification here because I, I don't understand if Counselor Whipple is making a motion that is a substitute motion from the one that's on the table? Or are you just making a suggestion about something that we should consider in six months? Because that's certainly something we can just discuss at a later point.
I am in favor of trying out the ordinance as it's written, the amendment to the Provo City Code and seeing how that works, which was our plan to do that. I, I am open to the possibility of changing the appointment process later if it looks like this would function well enough so that we could do the elections. Because as it is now, the elections don't.
Okay, but, so you're not proposing a substitute motion?
No, not a substitute motion.
I, I, I would suggest that we revisit that question if, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. So really it was just to, to counter the idea that we have to switch it to do elections right away. I'd like to see it functioning to see if it solves the other problems.
Okay.
I have just a quick idea here. So the neighborhood program as revised would not take effect until January 1 of next year. And then we can say a year from now that we'll have, we'll be six months into it, which is not necessarily a definitive trial period, but we can call it a trial period. And it would be terrific if we got like a BYU MPA class to in an unbiased manner evaluate the program and its functioning at that point. But for night, for tonight, let's keep the language as is.
Okay.
Can I beg one of your seven minutes?
Five now. Go ahead.
I, I would just say that I think Counselor Whipple's suggestion is very thoughtful. And I'll still vote no tonight, but, but I appreciate the, the implicit flexibility and open mindedness that comes with that suggestion. And I will count on it in six months. So thank you.
And even 12 months.
Possibly.
I, I concur with your assessment of Counselor Whipple's statement. All right. Seeing no further comment, I will call for a vote on the implied motion. And I will begin with Counselor Fillmore.
No.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
No.
Chair Hoben.
Yes.
Vice Chair Handley, I will vote yes. Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
That is five in favor with Counselors Fillmore and McKay opposed. Yes.
I would like to say that I am still going to completely support this and I'll be at every meeting that I can be at. And I-
Sure.
Do wish all the best for it.
Hope it works well.
Yeah. I, I think we know that about you. All right. If there is no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council meeting by unanimous consent.